Okay, greetings everyone. Good evening. I'd like to call and order the February 16th, 2022 meeting of the class and school committee. Would all members there present? Please indicate someone. Roll call. Mrs. Collier has informed us that she will be two minutes late. She'll be arriving around 6:30. Mr. Dial.
Present.
Mr. Kearney.
Present.
Mrs. St. Ange.
Present.
And I am President Craig McClellan, therefore we have a quorum. This meeting is, as we have been, it's being hosted in virtual format. Excuse me, hybrid format, which means we're in person and also enabling remote participation through Zoom. Meeting is also being streamed live on Facebook as well as Cohasset 143 TV. We'll move right into our public comment, and as I say at the beginning of every meeting, this section of the agenda is reserved for questions or discussion points or concerns or comments about topics that are not, or issues that are not on the agenda. If you have a discussion point or a comment about something that is on the agenda, then please wait until we get to that section of the agenda to make your comment. Otherwise, if you have something that's not related to something that's on the agenda, make your comment now. If you're present, you can just stand up and identify yourself, state your name and your address. And if you are remote, you can use the Q and A feature on Zoom to state your name and your address, followed by your comment. I will give everyone that is watching the meeting virtually a few minutes to do that. And if there is someone that is present that would like to make a public comment tonight, I invite you to do so.
All right. My name is John Swanson. I'm from 27th Street in Cohasset. And because you're planning to remove the distancing on the heels of February break in Joseph Osmond School where my daughter goes and my little like to travel. That's, you know, for people coming back. Wondering, I would appreciate an option allowing my child and obviously other children to remain masked to protect family members, but also to have that distancing help place that they can go to do that within school while they're eating snacks that much. Potentially, you know, if there's something like music class where there should be singing that they have in place that they can have that distance from other kids. You know, so that they can have that space so that they can remain safe. We have minors at home. I have senior people in my life that I need to protect outside of the school system, which is part of the community. And since our district has been in the red outside of the school, I want to try to continue to protect in February through the rest of the school year using that protocol currently for my daughters. So if you could address that for all of the people out there, it'd be great.
Okay, thank you. So I will just reiterate that, and I don't want to obviously, you know, disincentivize any in-person participation. But if the comment is related to something that's on the agenda, so the masking issue is on the agenda. So ordinarily, we wait until we got to that point in the meeting.
This is the distancing. So now, so she'll right?
My, my daughter does that all the time. It has to do with the distancing when she eats a snack and she eats her lunch.
Okay.
This is so that she has distance between herself and her colleagues in her class and her classroom or the wherever it is that you're planning on having everybody eating and mask.
Okay, I see.
It has to do with safe distancing for her because I have a minor that's not vaccinated. Also, we have a senior person in our like in town in the older housing in town that we want to try to protect the community at large. Because there's a very high risk currently outside of the school.
I see. I've heard eating. I thought, I was thinking mask removal when you're eating, so.
I, I got the same response from the first person I talked to tonight, so I just wanted to make sure.
No, I understand.
Okay, so as far as distancing, I mean, I guess I'll let Dr. Sullivan comment on the fact that, you know, what our plan is in terms of distancing if we decide to adhere to D E guidance, you know?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
And actually, I think we've already, we've already decided to, I think you have operational discretion over that. You've already decided that on the 28th.
Yeah.
We'll be returning to the normal distancing.
Yes, I, I did discuss that at the, at the last meeting, and I think that's probably one of the reasons that were, you know, that the question, thank you for the, the question and the, and the thought. You know, that is definitely been a, spacing has been a consideration for us clearly because D E from the beginning of the year did not mandate spacing of any sort anywhere for any school. So just so everyone's clear on that, we did that ourselves as an extra safety measure during times when we felt that we needed to because of potential viral transferring. But also, and really for a good majority of the time, because we didn't want to clog up our system with test and stay because of the quarantining guidelines. And the quarantine guidelines allowed us, if we were able to keep kids three feet in the classrooms unmasked or six feet unmasked. It allowed us to avoid quarantining protocols that would keep kids from in-person work. That was really important. Right now, our goal is to get things back to an operationally, socially, emotionally appropriate format based on the fact that, a couple of things. One is that the quarantining guidelines are not applying in terms of contact tracing. We're not going to be doing contact tracing. And we're not be doing test and staying anymore. So, and also because of the fact that we have to be able to have cafeterias back to normal. And I'll, I'll get you. Cafeteria is back to normal, and we have to have our gymnasiums back to normal to facilitate that for our, for our students. So we will work individually with people to help out as much as we can. But it is not my plan and our intention right now to create scenarios in our cafeterias where we can't use our cafeteria as our eating place. In other words, if the spacing requirements required us to spill into a, into the gymnasium with cafeteria tables, we're not going to do that right now. But we will work individually with families regarding that spacing. And we will be mindful of a few things. We're mindful of individual choice about masking. And we're also mindful about giving folks the opportunity to space in, in, in view of a snack. You know, if you're having a snack scenario. So we will work individually with folks, but right now it's not. I promise I'll get you.
You just said snack. I was just asking snack and lunch or just snack? I'm just trying to make sure.
So. All right, no, I'm thrown off a little, so if you get out.
My question had to do with snacking and lunch because those are the two times that my daughter is unmasked at school. Those are the only two times that I need to have distancing specifically. And I said, if there are any other high-risk times where, you know, there's a lot of whatever potential, I just want to make sure that, that we're able to kind of address what you're saying, but you haven't responded yet like you are right now, which is on a case-by-case basis.
Yes.
You'll be able to address that with family.
We will all, we always will want to, we always want to work with families and help them individually. But what I, what I'm not going to commit to is to stopping our operational flow with, with spacing requirements. Because I want to get our kids back into our cafeterias and gymnasiums. And I want our students to be able to collaborate in the classrooms.
Which you had sent me an email, and I did acknowledge that. What I was asking specifically for was what you were just saying is working with one at a time. And so nobody had replied to me to say that that's what you were going to do. And that, that you would work with folks to work with that one at a time. So that's the first that I've heard of it.
Okay, so I did, just for the record though, I did provide you with a really extensive answer.
You did the same thing that you were just saying, but that didn't, that didn't previously address whether or not there was going to be the opportunity during snack and lunch.
Sure. Okay, so I'm glad I could address it now.
Correct. That's why I was physically in when I was in there.
Yeah, no, I mean, in the future, just, you know, I would absolutely would have clarified that if, we always work individually. What I, what I, what I thought the, you know, I don't want to get into the email too much because it was an email exchange between us, but I thought the impetus of the email was to, to see if I was going to be looking to create scenarios where we had spacing for, for anybody who wants it in our cafeterias. And I can't guarantee that. And that was my answer to you because we need to be able to operationally.
Yeah, I didn't ask for that. I was asking specifically, how does a family like mine, who needs to have that distancing remain in place, work within what you have moved forward with, which is removing distancing? And so I haven't gotten that response. So now what you're saying, so any other families that are interested in having that, how do they?
So we'll work in individual families, but like I said to you in the email, and I'll reiterate again that if, if there is a scenario that comes up where we have to do so much spacing in order to keep our cafeteria, then we will not be providing that space.
So that's what I'm trying to figure out is how does that, how does that look to the community? So in terms of, in terms of, should the community?
So the community should not expect spacing in our cafeterias. And they should expect our cafeterias to be back to normal as they were before pre-COVID. And they should expect our gymnasiums to be back pre-COVID. If there are individual families that need us to help them, which we would help in any scenario, whatever it might be, we'll work our best to, to work, to help that. But if that situation ends up being so overwhelming that we can't provide our cafeterias. Because remember, we've spilled into and used our gymnasiums at both Deer Hill and Osgood in order to create a scenario where we have that spacing. I, we can't do, we're not going to do that moving forward now at this time. But if, so if, if the tipping point is such that enough families want that, then we're, we're just not going to be able to provide it for anyone.
I think they would reevaluate it at that point if there is a tipping point.
I'm sorry.
I said, I would think that you guys would reevaluate it if you got to a tipping point.
Well, maybe, maybe so. But I'm just trying to be clear that what I can promise and what I can't promise. So I hope you understand.
I wasn't asking you to promise what you would do once you got to a tipping point. I was just asking about what does it look like for families now?
Yeah.
Who want to be able to have it? How do they go about asking?
Yep.
And I think it would be good during this community conversation to mention how does a family member reach out to get that?
So.
And, and for the kids that I'm talking about are at Joseph Osmond School, there may be other kids in our class that have seniors that they're trying to protect or their minors. You know, and possibly even staff. So just making sure that that's clear for all of the folks that may want it for different reasons.
Yeah.
What that, what that path looks like for them, because right now it isn't clearly laid out for us.
Well, let me just lay out the pathway that anybody can follow to help, to get help for their, for their student or for themselves. They should call the principal, and they should have a conversation with the principal about any need, not just the need for spacing or a need or some, any apprehension or masking or, or anything at all. They should call the principal. And then if that, if that doesn't work, you can always call me and we can have a conversation too. So I'm just very careful about what I promise and what I don't hear. And I just, I want to make it clear that we will work with individual families. But our goal here is to get back to our operational sort of pre-COVID situation, because right now that's what's best for the kids. So I hope I'm not, I'm not trying to be slippery. I'm just trying to give you an answer that's accurate and that, that is also reflective of how we're going to approach this as a school community. But I certainly want to help, help you and your families.
So I'm going to cut the discussion off now. Okay, we do have a free comment per household limit. So that not one individual with personal needs, you know, can sort of redirect the meeting and we have to keep the meeting moving. So I'm obviously very happy that you attended and you're participating. But I am going, no, I'm going to cut the, no, no, I'm going to cut the conversation off now. You can communicate with Dr. Sullivan personally on any personal issue that affects your household.
And I did what he said with Mrs. Farrell, and I did it with all of you, and I did get one response back regarding what was going to happen for me.
Okay, I, I actually know that you got the response, but, but that, that's a.
What my daughter's going to do after February break is what I'm trying to say is that saying there's a path, but not getting a result from it, I don't quite understand. How, how that is.
Then you can call me. You can call me and you can email me. Okay, but I'm not going to dedicate any more individual discussion here. This is a public meeting. So it's not, this is a personal issue to you, and I'm not going to entertain any more discussion of it, okay?
Public, what happens on a personal level.
Are you, are you hearing me though? Are you hearing me though? This is everyone's meeting. It's a whole community's meeting. It's not just your meeting.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
I, so I have children at Osgood too, but I also have a child at Deer Hill, and I just was recently part of a conversation about this because Deer Hill just became mask optional. And I was a part of the conversation with the principal there, Dr. Alex Sullivan. And she was talking about kind of the process and, and the thinking that happened there and the conversations that happened with the kids there. And it does reflect just what Dr. Sullivan is saying, that, you know, keeping the lunches separate so that it's not full capacity in the cafeteria. And I know this is a different school, but I think that our elementary schools will probably not look too dissimilar. Don't you imagine? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, our elementary schools are going to go back to the way they were before COVID.
But they're also having split lunches, like not a full lunch, not a full grade is in the cafeteria at the same time.
Leave that to the operational decisions of the principals to do that. But it's not going to be restricted for COVID reasons in terms of spacing.
Right. No, I understand that.
They may, they may make decisions operationally to have less people in the cafeterias, but it's because of operational decisions, not because of COVID spacing requirements or really needs at this point.
Yeah.
So I, I, you know, respectfully, I, I really tried to answer your question, both in the email and now. And, and I guess I, I'll just come back to it, that we will work individually to try to help you as best we can.
Okay, we need to move on. Dr. Scollins, can you see the Q and A feature on Zoom by any chance?
Yeah, there's nothing there. I'm watching it.
So we'll move on from public comment, and we'll move into the superintendent's report at this point.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
All right, thank you, John McCollum. So this week we had a few national days, which is kind of nice. We had National School Counseling Week last week. So just a shout out to our amazing counselors in all of our schools who really keep us moving. And, and they've been so helpful and valuable. They always are, but particularly during pandemic times and kids coming back with needs and families coming back with needs. Those counselors are just invaluable to, to keeping everything afloat. So the, the work they do every day is meaningful. And, you know, it's nice that they have a national week for counselors, and it was last week. Likewise, yesterday was National School Resource Officer Day. So we were, I'm very, you know, proud that we have a wonderful school resource officer, Officer Taylor. He also does a lot for our schools. I'm very happy to have that collaboration with the Cohasset Police that they've been really a great partner with this, and we're looking to continue to grow that. So I couldn't, couldn't be happier with that. And thank you for all you do, Officer Taylor.
And we should note, Dr. Sullivan, I think Officer Taylor really fosters and cultivates a relationship with, with the kids in the school district that, and I sent him an email saying this, and I think it just deserves mentioning publicly. It, it, the relationships he develops with the kids, especially the, the older age kids, could oftentimes mean the difference between a manageable crisis and a tragedy. I mean, they feel very comfortable coming to him and interacting with him, and we're really lucky to have him. He's also a parent. He's a, he's an invaluable resource and, and, you know, hats off to Officer Taylor. Once you recognize, I, I think it probably goes unnoticed. But he puts a lot of effort into that position. I think he takes that role seriously. That's true.
Yeah, and he makes great connections with the kids, and that's, that's, that's the mark of any, any good educator is you make connections with the students. And particularly in his role is, you know, there's, there's trust that needs to be built and, and that inspires safety. So we're just happy to be able to recognize him. So thank you again, absolutely, Officer Taylor. And February 23rd, which we will be on vacation, but it's National Bus Drivers Day. So that's a nice, that's a nice thing. So they're, they're, they're wonderful. Have been very helpful. We'll have a bus update. You know, I think we're going to be getting some more bus drivers, more wonderful bus drivers in the coming weeks. So there's, there's, there's a lot of hope there. But clearly, all our bus drivers do human service, and that, that can be a very difficult job to drive a bus safely. And then obviously you have, you know, the students making sure they're, they're orderly too. So they do a great job. So. We continue to, well, I think, I think since last meeting, we, we did go mask optional at Deer Hill. I don't think we had a meeting in between. Am I wrong about that?
We did not.
We did not. That's been very successful. I'm very impressed at the way that educators are handling it at Deer Hill, as I have been at the high school and the middle school. But they're certainly very open to choice and that they're working with the students to make sure there's no stigma. And, you know, you have some students wearing masks, some students not wearing masks, some staff wearing masks, some staff not wearing masks. But it continues to be just a wonderful atmosphere in Deer Hill. And it's been, it's been very pleasant to be able to walk through the halls and see the smiles, the faces, and to know that we're doing it all in a socially, emotionally protective way to provide that support for the students. So that, that's been great.
And even after a full week of those, of the mask optional environment at Deer Hill, the high school and middle school, which have been, you know, several weeks now. The transmission rate was less than 1% in all buildings.
It was, and I'll actually show you that data as we get into some of our discussion about masks. Yeah, it continues to, continues to drop. And yes, it's, it's, it's thankfully, you know, reaching pre-Omicron, Omicron levels right now. So that's, that's a great thing. And that's happening at all our buildings, regardless of mask status, which is really something that not a lot of Massachusetts schools can track. We can't. We were, you know, the first middle school and high school to do so through Omicron. And I know, and I believe we were the second middle, elementary school to, to do it during, during this. And we've seen our rates mirror the rates of our mask schools and our mandatory mask schools. And we've also seen our, our rates move down proportionally as, as the other schools have too, you know, in our mask schools.
Well, it's similar. You arrived at 6:25 PM?
No, no problem. We also continue to celebrate Black History Month. Hopefully you've seen some of our updates in the, in my Navigator newsletter. Continue to try to update on that. And of course, diversity is a huge part of our, our plan, and it's been nice to see students celebrating that with their teachers. Our sports teams continue to thrive, and Jenna may speak of some of that, so I'm not, not going to get into it too much. But very, very proud of our student athletes. A lot of senior nights for the sporting events were celebrated. So just a few little updates, and now I'll turn it over to Jenna, Jenna, who is, as you know, one of our school committee liaisons. And Jenna, I'll let you kind of give an update. Hopefully I didn't steal too much. Okay.
Don't worry, you didn't steal, you didn't steal anything. Hi, everyone. It's nice to see you all again. February has been a great month at the high school. Everything, I haven't spoken to you guys since the mask mandates were lifted or mask optional. And personally, I just wanted to address it, saying like, there's no stigma really in the high school. I feel very comfortable taking my mask off or leaving it all depending on personal reasons or if I feel comfortable or not. But everyone, for the most part, feels comfortable wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. And I'd say most, most of my peers don't wear one in class, and some of my teachers have been taking them off now too. So it's great to be in a normal, normal learning environment and being able to sit at normal lunch tables with my friends back in the senior class. I don't think I've talked about that either since, since I've been here last. But everything's just felt really normal, and I've been really appreciative of how school, how my learning environment has been recently. Last week, we had a fun little ping pong tournament, which is in something fun that Student Council helped put on. And during utility, the students have the option to go to the gym, and you can participate in playing a ping pong tournament against some of the teachers. I know Mr. Sears and Coach, I participated, and it was really fun, like freshmen through seniors were all in the gym cheering on our friends. And every grade was involved, so that was really fun. And Monday, we had candy grams, which is always something fun. Yearly, I always look forward to seeing who I get one from. Half of them are just mysterious jokes, but that's like, that's what makes it so fun. And that was just a great way to celebrate going into break. And Friday is anything but a backpack day, which should be interesting to see what, what everyone comes up with. I hear some people are going to bring suitcases or wagons.
So the idea is they could, they.
You bring anything but a backpack.
So what your backpack would normally do, you bring something.
You bring something, yeah.
I didn't realize that's what that was.
So that'll be really interesting to see what people come up with. And the sports teams have been doing great. Senior nights have been really fun to be a part of in the stands or in the pool. And it's just been a really great environment. A lot of the students have been showing just a lot of respect. And it's just really important to me that I'm in such a good environment where the kids in the stands are being very respectful towards everybody and wearing their masks in the gym and cheering on our friends in a respectful manner. So that's been great. And I think that's pretty much it. Everything's been going really well. And this week, obviously, was a little bit more stressful academically as break is coming up. And almost every teacher is like, okay, tests, essay. But other than that, it's been really good. And the little activities throughout the week have been keeping it less stressful.
We started a new term.
And we started a new term, yeah. And that's been very smooth. A lot of my classes did change personally. But I know I have some friends who are freshmen and sophomores, and it's been an easy transition for them too. So. I think so.
Thank you, Jenna. Any questions for Jenna, Mrs. Collier?
No, thank you.
Mr. Dial?
No, thank you very much.
Mr. Kearney?
Yeah, you know, this came up in our facilities committee about lockers. And I asked my kid, and they're sophomores, so they really weren't like, they never really go on a locker.
Right.
So like every morning I go up and like, you know, I, I lift their backpack. And it's like 60, 70 pounds. I'm just like, and they weigh maybe 90. So I'm like, just like, oh, 100, maybe, you know?
To weld this thing.
I'm just doing the numbers here. I'm thinking, they got to tip over. So it came up in our facilities committee, maybe because we're looking at the lock. Now, do you guys get assigned lockers or do you know, is it just no one uses them?
Um, yeah, we don't, I've never had a locker assigned to me in high school, but personally, I feel like I don't really need it because although my backpack's a little bit heavy, I'm not really, I'm not walking that far from class to class, and it's on the ground for most of the day. So I don't really feel a need for it, and it makes it pretty easy because if I had a locker that was in the science hallway, but I had a class up in the history hallway, it would just make, yeah, it wouldn't make much sense for me to be looking on my books around. So I don't mind having the backpacks, to be honest. I think it makes it pretty easy to go from class to class. And I've never had an issue with my backpack being too.
Thing is though, like, you know, carrying your lunch around, you would think that the sandwich would go kind of like.
Yeah.
Throwing it around. The other thing too is like, if you play sports, you might have one in the sports locker. I'm thinking about kids that don't play sports, you know? So I don't know if we can just like make that a, like, at least like introduce them, like, because I have a locker.
Yeah, definitely.
And, you know.
I can give you a little history on it if you want.
Yeah.
So, you know, I could hear for maybe 10 years, and the first couple of years, you would change all the combinations of lockers. You can, you do them by grid level, see if you needed more. Have the custodians, you know, fix the broken ones. Deal with the kids who couldn't get into the locker. No, that's stressful. And then after the third or fourth summer, opening up all the lockers and having nothing in there because no one ever used them, we stopped giving them up. So we, we announced to kids that we have lockers. If you want one, we can give you one. But to Jen's point, it's actually a national trend. High school students just don't use lockers. How we were talking today, and so prior meetings about, you know, we do need storage. Basically, kids need places to put their lunches and things like that. And again, anybody who wants a locker, we, we can provide that. But it, it just seemed to be a lot of effort for, literally, I think we had like one or two people. Which operationally helps us because you don't need five-minute passing time if you're not going to a locker. It's not that big a place to, you know, circle around building to get back in.
Maybe by Friday, we'll get some great ideas of like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I mean, it's like, I do like, I do like the fact that it's optional if you want it. It's there because it's like, if you do play sports, you could use it. But I mean, we're looking at spending, what, $50,000?
Middle school.
Oh, is that the middle school?
Middle school.
Yeah, did they use that? Okay, so more like the senior thing, I'm all about high school thing that they don't. But the thing is, is that when they do the orientation in that grade, I think it just make it a point that if you want a locker, you can get it. It's like, I think the orientation for my daughters being intense, they during COVID, they didn't really get that orientation, so they didn't know. So what I'm asking is, you know, in the future, let's just do an orientation for the kids coming up. You want a locker, you can get a locker. You don't want a locker, you don't. The option's there, and you answered my question. Thank you.
That's great.
Hey, thanks, thanks Jenna. How's swim season going?
It's over for me, unfortunately, but the girls, and yeah, it's not really going, but the girls and the boys have stayed. The four boys who made it and the two girls who made it have that next, the next weekend, the 26th and the 27th.
Okay.
At Boston University. So.
All right. Any excitement building? Are you inch towards prom graduation yet, or are we still?
Oh, definitely. A lot of the moms and dads have been having prom meetings. I'm, I know there's like some text chains going on, and all of my friends are really excited. We have a group chat with our grade and everyone like sending their dresses. It's like. It's like, nobody get this one. That's what I'm, so it's just been fun, some excitement. And I know we're all looking forward to it because now having great events just seems like something that's so special. Because we saw what it looks like not to have one.
Yeah.
So I think we're all really looking forward to having hopefully the first normal prom and graduation back. And we're all really appreciative of all the hard work by the parents and the staff and the school committee to make that happen for us.
That's good to hear, Jenna, and that you guys deserve it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
As always, great update.
Yes, thank you, Jenna. So much, Jeff, you're busy, but thank you very much. Very nice. Shall I even move on?
Yes, please.
Okay, super. So.
Get our other student presenter out of here.
Yes, we have Madison Cool. Madison, I'm gonna, I'll let maybe Principal Scott introduce Madison, but Madison's obviously a senior. And I'll let Principal Scott introduce Madison.
Yep, so Madison's senior. And when Doc Sullivan mentioned that he wanted to have some, you know, spotlights on student learning this year. For the high school, my mind goes right to the end, you know, the students who develop the interest in the skills. Really take something on that they enjoy, that they're maybe passionately about, that they want to explore even further. And one of the things that we leverage in utilizing that is a lot of our community partnership. So kids who want to do science research, maybe partner with, you know, Holly Hill or C S C R. And obviously, one four three is a huge piece now relocated in the building. And really kind of vocational and technical piece and a non-camera piece. So over the years, we've had students on both sides of the camera. And it's never been more helpful and critical than the last three years. When, as opposed to being a, it'd be nice to see graduation. We had limited tickets. That was the only way to see graduation. It was the only way for us to get classified out. Couldn't have the scholarships in the, I mean, the auditorium. It's the only way to access school committees, right? So all of those things really took on a different life and are far more complicated than we think. Because we have to work with our own I T department, town's I T department, outside vendors for different things like, like some of the senior events that we had. And Madison has been there the entire time, you know, boots on the ground, working in a bunch of different places to, you know, really explore that, that industry. And then. So I'll turn it over to Matt.
Hello, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Madison. It's said five times. So I'm going to be graduating in a couple of months, a couple of months. So all this time, I've been reflecting on my time at the school as well at one four three TV. And I'm very happy and thankful that I was asked to come here and talk about it. Because I think it's a wonderful resource that has been to me. And I know I've been seeing a lot more numbers lately of people coming in. And I can see in the next couple of years, it's going to be a lot, way bigger than it is now. So Coacid one four three TV is a nonprofit access television, Access Television Corporation. We are funded by the most part by the subscribers of our cable TV providers Comcast and Verizon. We offer our TV equipment throughout town, and we have multiple locations. We contribute to a lot of the TV shows and different segments that maybe you've heard about before. Class of Common, Living Histories, Food One Four Three TV. And we also help out the Class of Drama Club, as well as different parts of the middle school and their own drama productions. So throughout this presentation, I'm going to kind of go through my freshman year to my senior year and things that I've done. And sort of just highlight the areas that class has helped me in the town, the studio, and the school.
Actually, you just kind of wave your hand to me and I'll advance it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So my freshman year, the reason I started at one four three TV is I think we've all heard of Coacid Two Fifty. The event that we were going to have before COVID, one hundred and fifty anniversary. And I was a student volunteer there originally. And I was going to do a segment with the Historical Society, and that's how I started off. And I fell in love with what I was doing and all the interviews. One of our interviews, as you can see, is Megan Fales from Akron Sale. That was actually one of my first interviews I did on camera and I wrote. And I remember, so basically, it was a huge learning experience for me. And I went on to do other things, like I interviewed for one of the town banks. I talked to many, went to the farmer's market a lot, and I talked to the local vendors. And that's kind of how I started off, like putting my foot in the door, understanding, kind of talk to people. The studio gave me a lot of communication skills and time management because I had to work with my, my sport schedules and then my school schedule. And I was able to kind of work around like how I was going to organize myself. So I was a very big girl. So my sophomore year, I was only able to do half a semester, so one semester worth of work. I came back, I had more of a leadership position as I did before. And before COVID, I was able to work with C H S News. And I kind of helped lead a couple of their segments, kind of help Mr. Sasso organize students there. We were doing a lot more interviews for different merchants in the town. Some with Dimitri Merchants from the Hangman Institute for Savings. But unfortunately, my time is cut short, so this slide isn't going to be that long. But we were able to, during COVID, to have a couple Zoom meetings. But me being home a lot, had a lot of time for me to like work on future projects that I was looking forward to. One of them that was C S B N, it was this segment that, I think it was a couple of years ago, that was going on about like the different sports segments in school. This sort of show, so I kind of developed that over COVID. Unfortunately, due to extended COVID, it wasn't able to be put out. But I put a lot of my time into that, and I was working with Dawn a lot. So sophomore year, not much to report. But so junior year was a big stepping stone for me because I was able to, thanks to Mr. Scott and everyone at the school, was able to get a year-long internship at the studio through an independent study. So not only was I able to come after school, but I had time in school to kind of be creative and work through what I wanted to do. And I kind of was able to connect what I was learning in school and all the things I was involved with, with the student body. I was able to connect it to the studio. So we created a COVID documentary because we were, we had all this time in our house and we were talking. We thought it'd be a great idea to talk to the administrators, the custodial staff, the teachers about how COVID has affected our learning environment. So we talked to Mrs. Sarudy, who is here at the library. I had a nice conversation with her about like what it was like to transition her different classes. I know she did research in eighth grade. I took that, everyone takes that, so it's a huge, like, big deal. But what are we going to do about that class? How she's going to set up like help in the library? So I had a nice conversation with her about that. I talked to Ms. Noise, where she explained to me, and I didn't interview with her about how it was an administrative standpoint, about how she was able to talk about COVID and how for the students. And we were able to show that to people and it kind of brought a different perspective of what was going on. A lot of times, we don't understand what's happening. It's like, as part of the school, we just hear about what we're supposed to do, what's everything going on. I don't get a lot of information. So the COVID documentary was able to help a lot of people, including myself and my other peers, about how, what is going on? What are all these decisions being made that we don't understand fully? But we were able to talk to people who are leaders in our lives to explain what was happening. So that was really big. So this year has been, thankfully, things have been returning back to normal. So I had, I currently have another year-long independent study period. And we, in June of twenty twenty one, if I'm correct, we, I was given an announcement that I was going to be one of the producers on the show Food One Four Three. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of it. But it's kind of a revival. It happened a long time ago. We worked with people like Catherine and David, who are a big part of our production. And so we kind of redid that. And so one of our first episodes was Let Go Bread. So we went, my responsibility is I was a co-producer and assistant to that. So I worked with him, I created a schedule, we worked with Colin Bell, he was a past student here, and now he owns a production company. So he helped us with that. So it was a lot of people in our community working together. And so we organized a shoot, we went to Holly Hill, they were a huge farm with huge help with what we did. We went to the farmer's market, we interviewed a bunch of people there. So that was one of our first episodes. And then currently, we're working on the Red Lion. So we're doing an episode about like the inn, and it's kind of revival as a restaurant. And I was named head producer for that. So my job was I organized the whole shoot. I worked with the talent, and I also created an image and sort of like an idea of what the management and staff at Red Lion wanted for their, sort of what they wanted to put on. And as well as like what we wanted to, it took about three months, kind of, for the whole holidays, it kind of lagged our timing a little bit. But that's about to air in about a week or two, so you guys can afford to see that. But so that was one of the, one of my bigger stepping stones in my hopefully career that I want in production. And it was really a true resource. The school was such a big help in letting me leave at certain times in school, giving me like, sort of time, resource, like just being able to give me the freedom to be as creative I want, as I want to be. And so I have to thank a lot of what I've been doing over the past four years to the school. Because I think that the ability for me to be like, oh, I'm really interested in this. I know we don't offer a class on it, could I do an independent study? And they were working so well with me, were able to create a schedule for myself. So that was something that I don't think a lot of schools have, and I'm really thankful that we do. So overall, this is a picture. I was in the stands, I helped record, and I took, that's a picture I took of the game. It was an amazing game we won.
Good memory, yeah.
It was a great time, honestly, being in the stands and having my peers around me. Everyone is super supportive of every like art thing we do here. So it's really nice to get like sort of a collaboration with the students and them being in photos and me being able to be there. And so we are also sideline project, that's not going to be up a little bit, we're working on a, another documentary on the football team and the Super Bowl. So that will be out soon, so we're working on that. So I was able to record there, and that was one of my favorite times. Because it's just so fun to be able to like be in Gillette and have, see like, oh, I, I have math class with him, you can have to see like everyone there. So that was a good time. But overall, I think that being here has provided me a lot of learning experience, time management, as I said before. And honestly, just a sense, I was able to discover my own passions through the help of the school. And so I'm really, I don't think I would have gotten that opportunity if it wasn't for me being able to come here after school and be able to do that year long. So thank you so much for having me. I'm glad I was able to explain what I do.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Madison.
Nice job, Madison. Thank you so much.
Questions?
Do any members of school committee have any questions for Madison, Mrs. Flair?
I love your presentations.
Thank you.
Great job. So awesome. What a lovely thing to experience. Do you know what your plans are for next year yet?
Not yet. I'm still waiting to hear back from schools, but I'm really focusing more on communications department as well as business. I want to be able to work on the business and organizational side of the film, which I've been doing now to further scale. So we're just waiting.
Yeah, you remind me a lot of a friend of mine from college. I went to P U for the College of Communication there. And I remember her always walking around with like, she was like this little girl from Long Island, and she was always walking around with a camera and a microphone. She has been an entertainment reporter in the New York market for years, and she is living her dream. So good for you.
Thank you.
Enjoy it.
Mr. Flair, Mr. Dial?
A second, great presentation. It's good when you, it's fantastic when you can find something like this that, that you can bring into school and, you know, learn practical skills. And I guess my question for you is, and this might be a question that helps other students. How did you find out about the nexus between one four three TV and the school? That you could have an independent study, that you could pursue this, pursue this pathway, which is not a pathway I think all many students follow.
Well, one thing I know is that one four three TV and the school have been connected for a very long time. I'm one of the many that have come through here. The reason I was able to have, so I knew this was existing is because there's almost like a lot, there's always a couple of students per grade that are involved in it. And they're very vocal about their time there, and it's always very positive. So I was able to like, through like word of mouth, this, understand that we have here. But also, it's just a lot of what per three TV does is it reaches out to community. So I always knew it existed because they film a lot of our games, they film our plays, they come for graduation prom. I filmed many pre-proms and graduations. So it's one of those things where it's always been there. So I knew it was a resource because it's such connecting to the community. And also, when I talked to administration about like, oh, I really want to do this, do you have any classes that are similar? It was super easy to just be like, oh, we've worked with people before in here, and they had a lot of success. Would you like to like, just spend some time here? It was more about like, being able to express my interests, and I had a lot of avenues.
That's fantastic. And then a question for the people at home and myself. If we want to watch these documentaries, is there a place where we can find them?
Of course. So we have, we are on Comcast. We also have a YouTube channel. So if you look up our name, we have a YouTube channel and a website as well. So a lot of times, we've got a way to kind of address more to the community. So we're going to create announcements on like when things are coming out. But we have, we're on, we have our website, we're on Facebook, we have a YouTube channel. So you can browse all of our past work and our future work will be up on there.
Great, thank you very much.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Dial, Mr. Kieran.
I echo my colleagues saying, I think this is great, and showing the community what we have to offer. And I also would like to comment that the pitches were very clear, very quality. Pictures, which I thought was impressive. The other thing is, what do you see as far as the future goes? Because like, I'd like to like, be able to watch a Boston, a junior basketball game. Do you see that in the future, that maybe coming out with some kind of interim program where we can get some announcers?
Oh, yes.
Try to bring this to a different level. Because I often think it would be great for my father that's in Florida at the time, God bless him. But he'd love to watch the girls play. And we were able to do that last year. But this year, we were fairly able to do that because I guess it's a program.
Yeah.
So where do you see the future?
Well, currently, right now, what we do is we have a lot of student volunteers, a lot of underclassmen. We all have a sort of thing where we volunteer to film games. We film the games, and then we give it on to the coaches. I don't know if you've ever heard of Huddle before. It's like the program where a lot of coaches, they'll post their own videos. So that way, the players can watch back as film. You can also watch the teams you are playing. So it's like a kind of like connected way to watch film, watch each other play. So if you wanted to watch a lot of games, a lot of our teams have it. In terms of announcers and stuff like that, we were getting more involvement from the student body. Mr. Sasso was a huge help because of his class. Since we have sort of a lot of people for his class, they create different TV segments, and we air those on our channel. But we have had a lot of interest in sports. We have a lot of people, I'm not sure if you like, people will like eat pizza and they'll talk about statistics. Where they'll talk about, they'll review our school sports. So we have a lot of creative avenues there. But if there was ever an interest, C S B N was one of the things I thought of, where we would, it was a whole like thing about talking about our sports and then about student life. So due to COVID, that was never able to come up. But it's one of the huge possibilities, we already have plans for it. So there's always room for people, if they wanted to create a show where they went to all the games, they brought a microphone and they sat in the stands, and they talked throughout the entire game. There's always room for that. We have plenty of areas for them to create it. So if anyone wants to do it, it's worth it.
That's great. And still, the other question, if somebody does want to, wants to get involved, will probably contact the school?
So I would definitely go, and they can talk to me or anyone else that is an intern right now. I would more than likely, as long as I'm here for the next couple of months, I would love to talk to people. Dawn is one of the most open and nicest people I've met, so he would definitely love to talk about that. So honestly, it's pretty easy. We just, we're right there, you just walk on over, knock on the door, and just talk about your idea. And then you can, sort of if you have a little bit of a plan, you can talk with us who work there or him. And you can kind of, it's very independent. So if you want to create something, it's up to you to have the idea, the plan, okay, I want to be here at this time. And then we have a green screen studio over there, so you can just schedule time to do it. And then as long as it works with what we're filming at the time, if you have people who want to participate, and if you want to talk to Mr. Sasso, sort of whoop everyone in, it's very easy to create it if you like so.
Madison, Mr. Kieran has tons of school spirit. I don't think he misses a single athletic event, so he might be your person to do these shows. Miss Sayhun.
That's great. I really admire your self advocacy. I think that that alone will take you very far in life. And I feel like in the very near future, we're going to be seeing your name in credits as the producer on the Nationals level. This is awesome.
Thank you.
It's a lot to achieve by your senior year at high school.
Thank you.
It's also really nice to see that the internship program provided this for you. So I think that's a, it's a good example of some of the things that the internship is probably, it's really pursuing their passions. And you have a great example of that, you're going to succeed because of that, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. Wish you the best.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, have a great night, Madison.
Your meeting.
Thanks very much.
Great job.
That was a great job. So, moving on to the next item on the superintendent's report, which is our program of studies. So have Principal Scott come up? He was able to sit back and listen proudly to Madison talking about the internship program.
Yeah, so, you know. We have some changes to the program of studies, I'll go through them quickly, but just on the independent study piece, it is something that. And it is something that we've, more kids than you would think are involved in a variety of ways. And we are currently in the process of kind of tightening up with the processes around that, uh, what the output is, and really I'll show you, because that's where we've fallen kind of short. But we've had students write books on organic farming. We had a kid build a drone. We had a kid attempt to build a rocket ship. We had, oh, yeah, we had a little little fire. Um, we have a student, right now former student in the Indian Ocean on a Fulbright scholarship, tracing shark populations because he did an independent social science project uh, with Dr. Tewin Tewin here on the shark population, Kate, the relationship between them and seals. So this is actually a kind of a rich history in broadcasting space. There are a ton of students per capita from Cohasset who are in uh, production, media. Uh, we have an ESPN reporter, a couple of people we love. So they've actually done, done quite a nice job, but not everyone always sees that. And that's one of the things we get out there.
But I'll, I'll just say, I'm jumping in, I know, but what I really love about that, the infinite learning, is the focus on practical learning and real career skills. You know, it's great to learn Shakespeare and, and all the things that we learned in high school, but to actually have an avenue where people can develop real skills and in, in the world is, is, is a phenomenal asset. So.
From a skills perspective, to be able to conceptualize a project, manage your time, advocate, and it's authentic assessment. She doesn't get a grade for 143. She gets critiqued. The program's either good or isn't good, and you have to learn how to deal with that and make adjustments and move on, because that's the way it all works. So you know, the more we can advocate and encourage students, and you know, there's a huge degree of trust to let her leave the building and go down to the red line for an hour and come back and not have to worry about it. Um, you know, there's certainly, we, we have our liability checks and stuff like that, but um, you know, for students to be able to develop that sense of independence and passion and creativity ethic is, is great. And I'm glad our schedule allows it, because you know, it's so front loaded that as kids get older, it, it doesn't have to be about taking five APs. It can actually be about doing things that um, have more practical meaning.
Well, I, I could want to applaud that. And if there are things that you need from this committee or from the administration that would help expand those opportunities for kids, I'd, I'd love to hear that. And see what we can do, because I, I, I just think the emphasis on practical learning is more and more important every, every successive year.
Yeah. And the partnership that we're not flirting right now, because you've been in partnership for a long time, but the, the um, meaningful watershed educational experience partnership that we have with CSCR and got these eight or nine different local organizations and schools is gonna be fantastic. It's, you know, doing water quality testing and looking at the economic impact and the cultural impact and, you know, the impact of the shell fishing industry. Going back to political awards and, and you know, sharing your findings. So a lot of that stuff is you know, we're, we're growing. And Leslie and I were meeting last Friday with a bunch of other educators talking about how sometimes that does butt up against some of the standards and some of the expectations and the grades and GPA. But it's more authentic and kids get more out of it. And it's really just, I, I think it's advertising what kids are able to do. Uh, we do bring it up when we talk to the eighth grade parents and kids coming up. It's so far down the line. It's a little bit out of their radar. Um, but it is exciting to see.
Very tied into our strategic plan, yes. And also, as you saw from students last time, the desire to have, right? And the appreciation of having.
So, back to the a couple of operational changes, a couple of changes in response to some things that are going on with the state. Uh, a couple of years ago, just before COVID, the state passed a law, not a DESI requirement, but an actual law, that students starting with the class of 2024, and you have to complete civics project. It's called the Civics Project Endorsement, which is really a research-based broadly defines civics advocacy um, project. So whether that, you know, culminates in great change or falls in its face, that, you know, that it's all those components of taking something that's important to the community or important to um, some broader community and, and understanding it, talking about it, advocating for it. So we're in the process of identifying some of the courses that can uh, allow students to achieve that broadly, you know, whether that starts as a, you know, the freshman wellness course and talks about, you know, drug use or alcohol use, you know, and results in a sticker campaign at the package stores, or whether it occurs, you know, in events placed in English chorus uh, in a different form. However, we kind of identified those. The state changed the scope and sequence of the world's history and US history. So we flipped world's history into a junior course, which changed a little bit of the scope because they're all still set, pushing the US history course down into freshman and sophomore year. And that changed that scope a little bit. We replaced our introduction to chemistry with an introduction to physical science. It for a couple of reasons. One, the standards changed. So the uh, national science, next generation science standards, moving into the eighth grade, picked up a lot of what we had as a semester course in our intro to chemistry. But intro to chemistry, which originally was a semester course, was never a proper chemistry course. So coming in new, it always looks strange that I could do take intro to cam, then cam, then AP cam.
It's like an intro to lab science.
Like you should be a doctor by the time you get out.
Right, right.
Um, but it was really more like an intro to lab science. So um, how to keep a, a lab journal, how to set up an experiment, what the equipment needs. So we had originally cut it down to a quarter. And then in discussion with the department, it made more sense to actually make it more about physical science. Chemistry was the umbrella that we had used before for a couple of reasons. One, it didn't really matter what venue you used to teach some of those skills. And two, science is very tricky with licensure. And so we had an abundance of chemistry licenses, um, which allowed us to have those teachers. It's very different than math or English where you have a license to teach high school or a license to teach, you know, middle and high school. You need a license to teach physics or bio or chemistry. Physical science, we don't need a specific license, or it allows anybody to teach those courses. And it dovetails better with the intro to physics, which comes up in the spring for freshmen and what we test the MKS on. So um, a lot of the content is gonna remain the same. But we did think that that was a better, well, for a couple of reasons, not the least of which was it looks cleaner on the transcript to have a a different science course than a bunch of chemistries. Some of it was just um, housekeeping. So we removed a semester on ecology course because we replaced it with biodiversity ecology. We left it in there because we wanted to see if the core of course had the same traction that the ecology course was. It does. So we took that out. We removed intermediate art. For scheduling reasons, because we're able to offer some of that in other areas. Cutting down art major and portfolio art, which are really the two courses that allow students to develop art portfolios for art school. They're very small sections, but they're very important for kids who want to go to a university or, you know, a place like that. We have a couple of new courses. So we created a new section on digital literacy and computer science. And we're really, you know, in a good place right now. We're gonna really try to grow the capacity of our computer science interest. And we felt like the best way to do that was to start with things that kids might really be interested in, in creating. So we have two courses that we're gonna float to students and hopefully get a good response. One is video and game design, and the other is mobile app design. Um, so we'll advertise those when they come out. We'll see what the student response is gonna be. We have someone in-house who's very excited about developing those curriculum. Um, and I think they'll be very popular. So it's, I'm, I'm excited about that. It, we don't have a lot of programming courses. You know, we have um, website design and we have some introduction to tech encoding, but this is really more practical app development, game design, game development stuff for students.
Yeah, and actually it's a good, good time right now to just talk about this a little bit. So one of our charges this year was to really look at um, a curriculum, kind of curriculum layout um, for computer science and what that might look like going forward. So this is the work of obviously Principal Scott, but Dr. Scollins, Mrs. Raden, uh, Principal Mills, and team really looking at where we are. And then also our elementary too. But right now, we're, we're focusing on our, our middle and high schools. So I show you, um, because we'll talk about the, the implication of this later, but I'll just show you the uh, layout. Maybe Dr. Scollins, you can kind of narrate what we have. It's a little small, but you can see the key over here. It's, it says that uh, in dark blue indicates courses that already exist. Light blue are new courses that we're, we're creating. And then yellow indicates long-term goals. So you can see, we, we kind of have to meet the students where they are when you're looking at like AP courses. We can't really just throw a course in there and they're not prepared uh, from a granted, we've acknowledged we need this, but if they're not prepared for the course, then we just can't throw them in the course. So this is a very thoughtful articulation that took a lot of work. So I'll let Dr. Scollins talk about it a little bit.
Um, so back in October, we were looking at, um, you know, how are we gonna build out our computer science? So one of the first things that um, the team looked at was what already exists around um, digital learning and what was happening in courses already. Uh, and it related to the standard. So to make sure, you know, um, that those things that should be in courses were and, you know, lots of things happen in courses. So it's not necessarily you have to have a separate course completely for some of those digital learning strategies uh, and standards. But um, when it all came down to it, we came to the fact that we already had um, the website design, if you look at the two, the high school there, which is the larger of the, the block. So we had um, website design, social media and intro to tech and coding. Um, and so we knew we wanted to grow that out. And as um, Principal Scott said, we added the two courses of mobile app design and video game design. And those two courses are kind of, they're, they're built so that people who may have an interest in apps, uh, creating apps may go into that area versus those who like gaming, right? So, so it allows the same things to kind of happen around coding and learning all those things, but in a different format. So uh, and then it dovetailed nicely to the middle school, which is going to add robotics in for this next year. Um, and we had Lindsay Kay, who we brought on board last year as our instructional technology specialist at the Millan High School. And so you can see here, she's got her digital learning and computer science course that she will be teaching. So she's actually gonna do both those courses next year. Adam Sasso, who currently teaches at the high school, website design, social media, and then the intro to tech encoding, is also going to now teach those two courses, mobile app design and a website design. Now, we've built that out for next year. Our future goal is then to build capacity and our goal is to get to AP um, computer science principals and um, AP computer science. Right?
Yeah, the application.
Applications. And so those two courses, um, we don't have enough students to put them in there yet. So now that we're building it up, we'll have more students as time goes on, right? Um, and right, in two years. So next year we'll have these courses. The following year we'll add more courses, including the ability to move into those AP.
And one really exciting thing about, I know we're here to talk about the high school program of studies, but since we have it up here, the robotics course is going to really focus on coding, which is, which is great. I mean, it, a lot of robotics courses focus on coding, but they do a lot more with the design engineering process of building the robot. That, that's important, but we felt that the curriculum really needed to lend itself more towards coding.
It does. Exactly. And we're doing coding at the elementary levels. That's been happening with students, but also um, Suzie Corcom, fourth grade teacher, secured a grant from the CEF, which is bringing someone into work on coding. Um, like just a little bit of a higher level with all the third through fifth grade students. It's a lot of opportunities this year per grade to be able to work with um, with this person, um, I'm forgetting his full name, sorry, um, around coding. And then we're gonna be
First name is John.
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 But anyway, we actually got to see him today. It was awesome.
He was great.
Um, and so it's kind of, we're, we're doing this. We're building it out. Um, but this is where we're at right now. Um, and fortunate enough to have the grant. So we'll have kids that are coming in into next year that will have some more coding um, than they had in the past. So.
And this, this whole plan, and we'll talk about the implication of this later when we get into Sue's part. But this is all done with existing staff. And remember, when we hired Lindsay Kay, her, her role was a little bit um,
Trying to
to be formed. You know, we knew we needed her and, but clearly we can also use her to, to do some teaching as well. So this is a, um, this is a good thing from a budget standpoint as well, as, as we're looking at where we are right now, what we can do with our current staff and still accomplish our goal of building out our computer science program.
Correct. And we want to build stronger pathways so that students who really want to focus more on the computer sciences will have that option. Those who want to dabble in it will have those opportunities around electives. Um, and so we'll be creating those pathways as we move forward.
So I will, unless you want to take any questions on that, I can go back to the program studies.
I think we just wait till Principal Scott's finished saying, I do want to just, as we're on the computer science issue, just give a little bit of sort of uh, retroactive credit to former committee member Jennifer Madden, who really championed um, the computer science
Yes, she did.
The computer science program and, and development of that curriculum. And pushed that for, I think, several years became, before it became a, a reality in terms of funding. And uh, and now I'm hoping she's watching at home to see uh, what that's evolved into. Um, and, and continues to evolve. It's not like it's, you know, the final product yet, but uh, Mrs. Madden, if you are watching, you know, I, I hope that you see that and, and are and are proud of yourself for, for getting us there.
Kudos to Ms. Madden, and also kudos to the, to this particular committee, as you advocated for Lindsay Kay's position, which this, that wouldn't be possible without the position we just put in
Right.
um, last year. So that would, that's really important to know that, that not only is she providing technology support in the middle and high school, but she's doing um, some great work in teaching as well, which really helps.
Yeah, it's really important to note.
And the only other new course is a leadership studies course. This comes out of a lot of students. Voice and student identified need. Um, we have a lot of, we have a lot of students who are in charge of things. And we don't always do a great job of teaching them how to. So we have a lot of captains. Um, so there's a difference between captaincy and, and leadership.
Just like real life, Principal Scott.
Absolutely, right? Absolutely. And, and so you could be a principal, you didn't, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're a leader. So um, you know, exposing some students uh, really open to anyone in the upper classes to leadership styles, value-based leadership, service leadership. Some of the, the technical challenges of leadership. So, you know, if we were going, using the school as kind of the classroom. So if we were going to develop a mentorship program with some of the younger grades, what are some of the confidentiality things that students need to report? What are some of the tricky situations they're gonna be in, uh, if they do a really good job on it? What are some of the practical challenges to mixing up lunch? What happens if people don't want to do what your great idea is? And, and how to pivot off of that. Um, and so, you know, we'll see what the interest is. Uh, but I think, I think the title alone will make it appealing to some.
Yeah.
Um, and I think the, I think if it's done right, there's a lot that we can do in the building to address some of the student needs by having a captive audience.
Think about student, student agency and that, that term that's in our strategic plan. This is an exact sort of conduit to that.
No, I really, I really like it. Um, so is that, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. So any questions, Principal Scott, on the program of studies? Ms. Flair?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Mr. Dial?
Um, a couple of questions. First, is the um, leadership studies, is that open to any committee members? Cause I could leadership studies.
I tell you what, it's a great opportunity to get people in from the community who are so there, there will be a lot of that.
Yeah, let's, let's keep that, keep that in mind, because that's again, it goes to your goals, well, community involvement. Um, on the um, the, the history and world history, US history reflecting changing guidance for the state, I think we, we skipped over that. I maybe you covered it, but I didn't get a note. Uh, what was the changing guidance from the, from the state on that one?
So the DESI changed the order in which you teach the classes. So some of this comes with that eighth grade civics push, graduate civics push, but they wanted US history to come earlier in the student experience and world's history to come later. So in flipping those, in flipping the sequence, you changed the scope to adjust to the grades.
So they didn't change the history. They just changed the order in which you
Things that they are.
Yeah. Um, so then on the, on the physical science, is, is chemistry still a part of that physical science? I kind of understood that an umbrella with a larger
Physical science is really broadly defined, which is why it doesn't fall under a specific licensure. So there's a lot of life sciences, there's a lot of physics, there's a lot of chemistry embedded within it. Uh, so it allows the teacher to go in a couple of different directions based on what they think is most important, but it really does allow a little bit more continuity going into that physics proper, so that you don't have to try to get everything into that course. Not that I think we have a problem with it, but it, it's just a little smoother. You know, the kids don't see that they're jumping. Not that I think we have a problem with it, but it's just a little smoother. The kids don't see that they're jumping to do a different, different direction.
Well, I thank you for your presentation. I thank you for the, the update and I'm envious, I have to be honest, of this program of studies.
It's a good offense, for sure.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dial, Mr. Kearney.
First, I'd like to thank you for doing a great job as principal. Kids are very happy to go to school every day. So that is a plus. I also, I I kind of want to address what I learned the other day here in this room. With the kindness of the tenth grade coming college. And one of the things I think we talked about is how important it is to do, it's almost better to have kind of grades than to do AP classes that you don't do well with. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think a transcript needs to be personal and it needs to tell a story. And it's part of the larger story that you're going to present to whatever school you want. So the, you know, the big myth is that there's one right way to do it. And the first question I was ever asked in the school committee meeting, other than will you be in hats in the high school? What is, what is the roadmap to Harvard, right? Which is not a thing, right? And the kids who've had the best experience really decide, they, they learn to love what they're doing and they're, they're more productive and they have a better story behind it. People can envision them on campuses and see what they're going to be like in the dorms and see how they're going to interact with professors. So it really is unique and and we have a lot of student stress and parent stress and family fights and guidance and family fights and administrator and family fights about this notion that you have to, that there's this AP path. And when we have our curriculum night with the eighth grade parents, somebody's going to ask, how many APs do you offer for freshmen? None, their college-level courses, take a high school course first time, right? But the kids who found the most success often have varying skill sets. So they might find real success in math and sciences and decide that they want to take an accelerated English, not an AP or a college prep English, get an A. But they've done so much more in biology and ecology and working at CSR and having an independent study that it's far more appealing than getting a bunch of B linuses and being super stressed out because you're taking four APs.
Right. And I'm, you articulated it so well. And one of the things that I noticed going to this meeting is we do have some really good councils.
Definitely.
What I did notice too, and it seems like it's always the same parents at the meeting. And I felt like if we had this kind of, because it was eight thirty in the morning. So a lot of parents didn't get to go. So it's just in the future, maybe we could add in some, some kind of more interaction so that people can attend these because it was a lot of good information.
Yeah.
And to, and to meet the councils and to make sure that my kids know that they have to advocate for themselves.
Yeah. And I think having technology like this is going to make those easier. We did talk earlier about, do we want to do it on Zoom like we've done it before, but is that too impersonal? Because it is sometimes difficult to manage in a conversation that is personal to each student.
The use of this very device.
Yes, of this very device.
We're not quite there. We, we have it. We just got to get it up and running and train people.
But to allow other people to come in and, you know, interact that way, I think that is important. They talk enthusiastically about doing podcasts and putting things out in the newsletter, but we just haven't had the time.
By the way, I know. The other thing is, you know, one of the things is we've been stressing is wellness around here. And it's nice to know that we're working on wellness and both gender friendly and you can use the equipment. So I'm, I'm excited to see that. Also too, and I don't want to get off subject because I know this is the program of studies. But would you think like, as far as after-school programs, just pick up best? Because one of the things I was thinking about, do you know there's 30 kids that are going to try out for freshman class? You know, we only have three kids that play basketball this season. Three took three. So we have 30 kids and then you end up with three kids playing that. So is, is there anything that we could do to kind of maybe start a club leagues and try to maybe get these kids going? Because my fear is that they're all amped up and then they don't make the team and then where do they go, right? They go home? Like, can't we make something here to try to do like a big after-school program? Because really, the bottom line is, a lot of these kids are playing sports and then all they do is practice and they don't even play. You know, it breaks my heart to see, my kids play, I can say, but I, I also look at other kids too. Notice that they, look, I'm the kid that didn't play. Can we always, can we tell? But my point is, is that can we look at some kind of like after-school program? Because like I coached these eighth graders and I'm afraid a lot of these kids aren't going to be in the team. And they're going to be devastated. And and they all, all they want to do is play pickup ball. They, they don't care. It's not about that. So I just wanted to bring that up.
So you're fair. I don't want to put Principal Scott on the spot. I'm Principal Scott on the spot there. Remember that though?
Because I wasn't trying to do that. Yeah, I know, I know.
So.
I did say.
Let's just, let's just stay on track for us for now. And then, you know, I mean, Mr. Kearney will reach out to you, I'm sure. And we can always do that, Mr. Kearney. It's a good suggestion. I just.
Well, I had to, yeah, I just, and I did say that.
We gotta keep on track. We gotta keep on track.
Keep me on track.
I know. I know. You're very excited. You have a lot of good ideas.
Center and I'm happy.
You have a lot of good ideas. So we want to hear them all. Maybe not all ones.
We're, we're all working in the same, we're building in the same boat with you.
Yeah. I'll meet you in the gym tomorrow.
All right. Any other questions for Principal Scott? I have actually one, Principal Scott, about the leadership course, which I find really interesting. I don't know, you're probably aware of what Ms. Jewel and Mrs. Ryan are doing with the student government in the middle school. Are we, are we mirroring that at all in the high school for the high school student government?
In terms of the structure?
Yeah, it's a real proactive approach. And if we sort of, I feel like it can be successfully sort of integrated into the leadership studies too. Because like you can, you can sort of make a lot of, you can make a lot of sort of correlations between that structure and positive leadership. So that's sort of my question. Is there any, first of all, is the StuCo in the high school structured similar to the middle school or are we planning on doing that? Or is it just a sort of standard structure, traditional? And second, is there any plans to incorporate, you know, student government concepts or, you know, structure in the, the leadership course? So anyway.
So which one to start with? So Ms. Norton and Ms. Ridge and I had a conversation earlier in the week about looking at some of the advantages isn't the right word, some of the benefits that the middle school changing their model has, has made. And it goes back to what I said earlier about, you know, being a leader isn't necessarily being the one who was elected, right? And and, you know, the challenges that you run into any school in, in life, right? Are, you know, popularity or, you know, who's going to champion one particular issue that people are getting behind, whether or not they can actually make that happen? So we were talking about like getting the most of our current, out of our current leaders. Maybe we need to change how those leaders get elected in the first place in order, because maybe we're not getting the students with the most immediate potential. Not that you can't develop that, everything you should be able to. So we're looking at that for sure. And then just trying to, we're still wrestling with being in the middle of or at the end of COVID, which is much more difficult than being in the beginning. So, you know, when we closed in the spring of 2020, there was like a lot of reaction. There was a lot of shutdown. There was a lot of like, you know, now what do we do? Here, kids are really kind of slogging through. So we have a lot of data points. And I was taking a look at some of the pair data that we're going to evaluate on Friday, which is the kind of the social emotional spaces of where kids are at. We did a culture survey today and we had some technical issues with it, but it wasn't as well responded to as I was hoping in terms of percentage standpoint. And there's a, there's a kind of a general, it's not apathy, it's tiredness. You know, it's not that they don't care, it's that they're just tired, you know? And this is kind of the worst part of the year. That's why we get the survey when we do.
Because they're always tired of normal years.
Yeah. So trying to find ways, you know, even the ping pong tournament, it wasn't as well attended as you think it would be. And so, you know, what are the, understanding the reasons for that? How do we get the students to really take some ownership of it? We need to encourage more participation in school life. They want that. But it, we're in for, it's going to be a lot, you know, we're, we're in for a long haul in terms of, you know, really getting students into a, a very well place, you know, physically, emotionally, academically. And I, I think there's a lot of different things that we have to do to make that happen. Yes, the short answer to your question is we are looking at all of that. Student council is a huge piece of it.
Thanks, Principal Scott. Mrs. Stenhouse, I'm so sorry. I forgot to go to you first before I asked my question. Do you have any questions, Principal Scott?
I, I guess I don't have any questions. I just was seeing how the program of studies reflects changes in our, our greater world and what kids are interested in. And I think, you know, coming out of hearing Madison's talking about her passion and just like imagining finding a passion at such a young age. I feel like I'm still, still working on it, but I feel like a lot of these changes really allow for that, you know, for kids to self-advocate and to explore things and to look at what leadership, what leadership looks like in so many, so many facets of that. But also like, it's really thinking about what their lives actually look like and not because we did whatever we did in high school, that's what it still needs to look like. It's just, it's just really nice to see the evolution of the program of science. So thank you for looking at that so thoughtfully.
Thank you, Mrs. Stenhouse. And again, I apologize for that. Thank you, Principal Scott.
Thank you very much. Vote on the program of studies.
I don't think so. Do we?
Yeah, we should have. Oh, no.
I don't think so. No vote on program of studies.
We typically have.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We don't advertise until we do that. So.
Oh, geez, what's above?
Yep. But, okay.
Yep.
Typically. Yes.
Okay. Well, then is there a motion to approve the program of studies that was just presented by Principal Scott?
So.
Motion's been made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dial. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion clearly passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Principal Scott. Have a great night. Okay. Shall I move forward? Yes, please. There are a couple of questions on the Q and A.
I know there's one, I think there's one related to busing, which is coming up.
Yep.
Yeah.
Then.
One just says, has the topic of masks. It has not, it's about to be addressed. They, they ask, has the topic of masks set on?
Okay, addressed, yeah.
That'll be covered in the masking discussion.
Okay, so I will move on here. So I wanted to first stop by just, as I, as I promised, just sharing what is, you know, obviously they're in my Friday newsletters and they're also, I always put them, I, I get the rates now. The, the case, the case counts and I put them on the website either Thursday afternoon or Monday or Friday morning at the latest, along with the, the community. So I just wanted to show you this because we are discussing masks and we are obviously looking at the potential sort of cause and effect of wearing masks and cases and how, you know, our mask optional schools are doing right currently. And then of course we have schools that, well, one school just became mask optional. And then we have Osgead, which obviously is going to be impacted by our discussion tonight. But just to show you, I, I don't have this week, but there's no indication from what I get so far that we're, we're doing anything but, you know, moving in the, the direction that you can see us moving in. The, the past week ending on the, the 10th, which is obviously last Thursday, we had two. Let me just go up to the heading here so you can see what I'm talking about. So the high school, middle school, Deer Hill, Osgead, and then if some of it was a district position. So we have, and this is students and staff, so it's everyone in our buildings. And you can see at the high school last week, we had two, the middle school, we had two, and we had four at each of our elementaries. So it's moving down as, and the town rate is, it's 10 point something, just four percent, four eight percent. Off of decimals there, but it, it is, it is also moving down, you know, but still, still present. So I wanted to show that just as a, as a precursor to what I'll, I'll ask us to discuss. So what we're discussing today, and I, I wrote it down, so I would present it in a way that so kind of guide us to, so as I informed the school community last week, on February 9th, Commissioner of Education Riley sent a notice to superintendent, school superintendent sent us almost immediately followed by a press conference by Governor Baker explaining that the mask requirement will be lifted for all schools statewide on February 28th. What that means is it becomes a local decision. So, so they basically have taken away the requirement and they've provided it to, to local municipalities and towns to make and working with really school districts to make that decision.
Regardless of vaccination rate.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's lifted. And so all of their mandated required language went to either strongly recommended or, you know, local decision. That's kind of the way, way it was worded, with the exception of one matter. It is required that masking be continued at this point on all school buses for all individuals on the school buses, because it's a federal mandate tied into the Department of Transportation. So, you know, unfortunately, we could discuss it, but we don't have any power to, to do anything regarding that if you want to. It is a, it is a mandate at this point until further notice. Okay. So what I'll do is I'll kind of go through what we need to decide here as a, as a, we need to decide as a committee. We need to decide as a team. And then I can always go back to this. I'll take it on the screen and go back to it to discuss any point. But the way I look at it is we'll need a vote on the following bullets that I'm, that I'm going to present. So matters for consideration and vote. The first consideration is, will we follow the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education lifting of the mask requirement on February 28th at Joseph Osgead Elementary School, thus allowing masks to be optional for students and staff at Osgead regardless of vaccination status as they are currently at Coliseum High School, Coliseum Middle School and Deer Hill Elementary School? And just for, for your information, because I did present at the last school committee meeting the updated vaccination numbers, the vaccination numbers have, have risen slightly. We're now at 71% in the building vaccinated. And you can see where our staff and students lie in terms of vaccination. The second matter is, as the mask mandate is lifted by DESI on February 28th, will we at that time allow visitors in all of our buildings to opt to not wear masks should they wish? Keep in mind that the, the former guidance was based, that allowed optional masking was based on threshold vaccination rate, which means it was based on, it was only provided for those schools that reached the 80% whose local decision was to allow it to be optional. And we had to apply for that. And it only really covered the students and staff who made up that vaccination threshold. Because the mask mandate is lifted for all individuals coming into schools, and when I say that, the mandate's lifted, you can make the decision at this point, starting on the 28th, the way I view it, to have, if you so wish, to have all, anyone who enters our school to be mask optional. Again, it's a local decision. So that's something we have to consider. The next bullet we have to consider is, are we going to follow the DESI DPH protocols for responding to COVID-19 scenarios 2021, 22, which includes strongly recommending that masking be required for students and staff returning from quarantine for up to five days while attending school work? What that means, if you remember, it was originally 10 days, 10 to 11 days quarantine. They reduced it if you have COVID. Based on some conditions, it was five days if you, and if you're asymptomatic, you come to school and you don't have to test, retest, okay? But you come to school and you would have to wear a mask from days six through 10, okay? That is not necessarily a requirement now. It's a strong, strongly recommended. And again, I could give some thoughts on that, but that is, that's something we have to consider is are we going to mandate that masking be worn from people returning, that staff and students returning from quarantine for those five days? Okay. And I can talk a little more about that as we get everywhere. I'll just lay it all out. The next one is, are we going to follow the DESI? The next one is, are we going to follow the DESI, what I said? You didn't hear that again. In accordance with DPH recommendations, it is strongly recommended that masking be required, this is the Department of Public Health, is strongly recommended that masking be required in nurses' offices throughout the district. Will we follow this recommendation? So those are all recommendations. They're not absolute requirements, but it is germane to our conversations here. So I'll leave it to you to discuss and I'll certainly advise in any way you like me to and provide my, my feelings if you'd like. But those are the matters at hand, as I see it.
First, can I, before, before we go, can I just scroll back up? I just want to look at the questions. We're still doing that. Very clear.
We'll take them, we'll take them one at a time, Mr. Dial.
I know, I'm just, I'm writing, writing notes, I have it.
So why don't we, first of all, turn towards, if everyone's comfortable with this, let me know if there's an objection, but as we usually do, turn towards the community first. If there are any comments or questions in the community related to any of this, we'll take those first. So I don't know if Dr. Stone sees any that are related to the masking issue. I know there's one busing issue, we'll get to that next.
Right, there was the one asking about the topic, and the person is Leslie, but Leslie has not given her full name or her street address.
It's not you.
It is not. And then.
Yep, we're, we're, we're going to, we're going to.
So they don't have that, so I'll leave that in your hands.
Yep, so if you're, you're making a comment, Leslie, could you please follow up with, we'll read it now, but can you please follow up your full name and address, please? So you can.
Yeah, I'm not sure that this is related. Who is the man who made the fresh remark, please? And I don't know what that's adjourned to, so.
Oh, because I said, don't be fresh.
Oh, okay.
It was Mr. Dial.
Yes.
But, but, but that. However, that was made in complete jest, so I don't know if there, that was.
I went away with my head, I didn't even. I was channeling my, my trigger call.
Yes, yes, no, that was, that was made in jest, so if there was any miscommunication there, we certainly were adding a little bit of levity, so.
And it's Leslie McKeever from 799 CG, CJC Highway.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. McKeever. We absolutely appreciate your participation and want you to share those thoughts as we do with anyone. And Mr. Dial was just being facetious, that's all. He's just joking around.
I'm going to stop my share so we can have a discussion, people can see us, but I can go back.
No, I, I think keep that.
You want me to keep it on?
Yes.
Oh, you got it.
Yep. Better find it now. Okay, so let's just take them, is that, was that it, Dr. Stone?
From masking. The, I have another one from Elizabeth Frazier's 27 Windy Hill Road. Thank you to this committee for unmasking our students at CHS, CMS, and DH. It is time to unmask our Osgood students. My son Brian has never attended school without a mask. Visitors should not need to wear a mask, especially given the vaccination rate of. This is Katie and Ted Loveitz. They do not give their address.
Loveitz there on Border Street.
Okay, so if they could send in their address, please. I want to start by thanking this committee for its leadership during a challenging time. Tonight, I urge you to put our children first and lift the mask requirement for all of the students at the Joseph Osgood School. Masks are, at best, credibly disputed as a respiratory virus mitigation measure and at worst definitely creating a barrier to the development, social, emotional, and the education of our kids. Members of this committee have acknowledged the, it. In advocacy, yeah, of cloth, thank you, of cloth masks and acknowledge that the district has no intention of providing every school community member with N95 or surgical masks. We cannot continue to force our children, teachers, and school staff members to continue to wear face coverings that we acknowledge do nothing to stop the spread of COVID. And they gave the address of 103 Border Street. They do have another one. This committee has been consistent with the guidance and recommendations of DESI, and this should be no different. They allow kids and their parents to make the choice together about whether to wear a mask in school. Thank you. Leslie, again, Wesley McKeever. And absolutely agree with the role of masks for Osgood children. It is time. Thank you, please. We beg of you as parents to take these masks off our kids.
Okay, so let's first discuss the, the big issue and what's that? Oh, so you, we, we have a free comment per household limit for participants. So you had exhausted those in the beginning, but where you may not be aware of them, and this is your first meeting I've seen you at, we'll take another comment from you, but that will be it, okay? Could you stand and state your name and address, please?
My name is John Paul David Thomas. My address is 27 Kings Street. And I would like to request respectfully that the mask be continued. I believe that it's something that gives a little protection that there can be for those who use N95 or whatever is effective against Omicron variant to help keep the future virions that might be coming down the pipe. And also be typically that for children, A, may not be able to show as much in terms of symptomatic or anything like that. That might seem older adults, and I think that's the form of the way that we can help the spread when it's not something that's apparent when, when you have somebody who is asymptomatic. So even though there's testing, I believe that masks give us a level of coverage that possibly even, which seems like the Omicron variant, that even having the vaccination and things like that is not necessarily what protecting gets from getting it. And so I just want to have that extra level of protection there for each of the different people who potentially don't get it.
And follow the recommendations that I was advised to be, at the, the Department of Public Service. Whatever the, what is the second?
It's not POCO.
Department of Public.
Yeah, I get it. It's an alphabet soup. I, I lose it all the time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's start with the first one, which is the question of whether or not we will make masks optional at the Joseph Osgood Elementary School as of February 28th, 2022, in line with the guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Any comments? Hillary is clear.
Okay, so I feel about this much like I felt about the Deer Hill situation. I feel like there are likely to be more people in the household who are not yet eligible to be vaccinated, and that makes me feel uncomfortable. I do acknowledge that there needs to be a very high quality mask worn by those who are wearing masks to be effective. I send my child at the Osgood to school with a KN95. It's the best that we can do, and so we do it. To the point made earlier about kids not knowing what school's like without a mask, I mean, mine's in kindergarten and she doesn't know what school's like without a mask. And I said, we might take masks like they might not be recommended or required at the end of the month. What do you think? And she said, I, I think I'll still wear my mask. Like, she just feels like that's okay, you know? Like, she's totally unbothered. She feels safer. She's not hysterical. She just, you know, feels like it's a good idea. So I don't know, we'll probably be wearing the masks regardless of how this all shakes out. I feel like I am a person who always will advocate to protect the people who have the least ability to advocate for themselves. And I think there are probably a lot of people in houses that we don't know have a lot of fear around getting the virus. And there are different layers of protection that we can offer them. The vaccine is one of them that I think has proven to at least make the risk lower that you'll be seriously ill. And if there are people in this, in, in houses that still are not able to access that, I don't know. I also know that my kindergartner is not reading as quickly as her sister did. And they're two different kids, but they're both pretty smart and we read, I mean, he's the big one, he's the little one, if I'm being honest now. It's like, you know, a way to be efficient, but. So I, I don't argue with the fact that it's creating issues with learning in early childhood education. I can't say with any degree of certainty that the masks are not a factor in that. Um, but yeah, like I said, I don't know. I just, I, I feel like I look forward to hearing what other people have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Clear. Mr. Dial.
Ms. Clear, you, I, I appreciate your remarks and your honesty, and you really do a good job capturing how challenging these decisions that we repeatedly make are, because there are costs on both sides. There are, there are people who have family members at home that have their, that have higher risks. And on the other hand, there are kids who are, are having challenging learning experiences. I hear from parents, I've heard from multiple parents over the course of the week of, of some of the challenges their kids are having. Kids have reactions to, you know, facial reactions. There, there's no, there's no good answer, and, and it's hard. I think what is compelling to me is looking at the data, it's going down. It didn't change when we removed masking or, or mask mandate in, in such a way that indicated that that was a directional factor in the infection rates within the schools. I'm also comforted by the limited impact the disease seems to have on children in particular. That doesn't necessarily answer the question of can they contract it at school and then move it on to another adult, which is a, is a real risk. And so I, I do worry about that. But I also, I think, am more concerned as a school committee member about the quality of education that our children are getting, about the ability for them to, you know, I know that there's children who are having delayed speaking, speaking. I'm having my own delayed speaking, but having, having hard time learning how to, how to speak. And no doubt, the masks play a role into that. And then there's also the element of just being able to have interpersonal reactions and, and learning non-verbal skills and so on. I just, I think the costs are unknown, and the risks, I think we're learning, are smaller than they appeared to be in, in March of 2020. And I think, you know, Omicron is less dangerous than Alpha and Delta, and that seems to be a trend. So, you know, I, I tend to think that the better part here, even though it's a difficult decision, is to, you know, think about what's most beneficial for the social, emotional learning from our children. And so that leads to, you know, taking away a mask mandate and putting, allowing those who are potentially negatively impacted from wearing a mask to be able to not, I think, is a, is a, is an important option, notwithstanding I know that there's, there's, there's both sides, so. With that, I am also interested in hearing other views.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Mr. Kearney.
I can't stand this mask. I could rip it off, rip it right off. Can't imagine these little small children that have to go every single day wearing these things. And the idea that adults can freely go and drink and spit at each other, you know, it, it just, it just seems like it's just, it's a huge hypocritical issue. I know it's, you know, we're all looking out for children. Are we really though? I mean, it's like, we're putting the masks on them and, and, and they can't read the teacher's language. They get, you know, I have, I have spoken to parents that have emailed me that are saying, take the masks off. I haven't got one that said, keep the masks on, just for people to know that. I do, I do understand it because fair, it is real. I'm not saying it's not, I'm not denying that it's not. I'm just thinking that this has gone on two years, especially children that have hearing issues, can't see, read lips. My brother is one of those. He, it is a challenge for him, so I do think that it's time to let kids be kids, let them see their faces, let them see their teachers' smiles, and let us, you know, let them be kids. And if we have to reexamine it, we'll reexamine it. But I think this has gone on long enough. Again, my heart goes off to these children that have to live these masks all day long, because I just don't know how they do it. I'm lucky in the business that I don't have to do it, but I, I just sympathize with them, so. Masks have gone in my, in my.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. St. George.
I too feel like torn. I, I, I guess I can speak best from my own personal point of view. It's the only place I can speak from, is, you know, I have family members who are in a position that if they got COVID, it would be probably deadly for them. I do not want that to happen for my children or for myself. I'm also at school. I'm also a reading specialist, and I'm working every day with kids who are trying to become readers, and it is very challenging to hear sounds or know what one's mouth is supposed to look like when making a sound with a mask on. And I talk to the kids about it all the time, and in the district where I work, they are making masks optional after vacation, and it's a very mixed bag of reactions from the kids who I work with who are struggling with reading. And a lot of it reflects, you know, what's going on at home and, and who feels that they're putting their own family members at risk. But there is a great sense of relief for those who feel more comfortable because we will be able to see each other's mouths and hear each other. For those of you who don't teach reading, talking about vowels without seeing a mouth is a really big challenge, and that's a really important part of language. So I, I guess I'm hesitant, and I, I mean, I will vote tonight, but I, I'm just hesitant because, like Mrs. Coliri, I want to continue to protect our community. I also am thinking, though, that we need to be having a lot more individual conversations and school community conversations like I have seen at Deer Hill recently. I think, I'm sure they happen at the middle school and high school, and I just, just not a part of my daily communication as much. I've been very impressed by how Principal Sullivan and her staff at Deer Hill had conversations about masks being optional, about how children can empathize with each other and how they can approach the thinking about masks, talking about when working with partners, I can have a mask, we can have masks available in the class. And if I'm, I see a classmate who has a mask on, I'm going to put a mask on to work with them as a partner. So I think that, like so many of these transitions, it does not have to be completely black and white. I think we need to look at it as a transition and have masks, perhaps, I don't know what our PPE status is, Mrs. Owen, but perhaps there are, you know, box of masks that can be available so that, so that when working with partners or when sitting near somebody, and I think it's, we can put one on when it feels like that's the most appropriate response to a friend and a community member. I think that empowering children to look around at others and notice and read the comfort level of others is a really important lesson that we teach at school anyway. And this is another route in which, another lens through which we can teach this now. So I have just incredible faith in the teachers in our schools and in our children's classrooms, and I know that they are already engaging in conversations like this because there isn't a day that masks don't come up in conversation. If you go to a, a circle discussion, a morning meeting, an afternoon meeting, everyone, everyone's talking about everything because they're kids. They share whatever they're thinking. So I guess, as we're, as we're looking at change, I think we need to make sure that every family is being talked to. I think that, like, when Deer Hill just switched to being optional, Principal Sullivan sent out a great email that really explained things, and I feel like helps to calm some nerves. What's the cafeteria going to look like? What are SNAP options going to look like? How can you reach out to me if you want to talk to me? And I have no doubt that Principal Farrell, if this happens, will do the same thing. But I just think to continue that communication and make sure that people are feeling welcomed and. welcomed and, um, and heard is going to be a very important part of this process.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. Um, I think today is clear that the masks are now no longer serving any sort of preventative protective, uh, purpose. They are however, very, uh, obviously inarguably, uh, adversely impacting teaching and learning. Um, perhaps social, emotional well-being of our students. So to me, it's a very simple, straightforward question, uh, question and answer. And, uh, beyond that, I've said everything I want to say the last, you know, three or four times we've had this, this, this labor, this debate. So, um, and I think we've absolutely ensured that everyone has heard, has been heard on this. Um, and I, I recognize that, that people don't all share the perspective that I share, but you know, I'm in a representative position where I, I, I need to make decisions that, uh, that I think, uh, suit the community at large. Um, and, and, uh, I don't, I don't see, uh, I don't see any preventative or protective purpose behind this restriction any longer. And I don't support it anymore. So, um, with that, I would, uh, seek a
Sorry to interrupt you, but there's more comments that have come in.
On the, on this agenda.
Sure, sure. Sure. Uh, we have Tim Davis from 160 Fair Oaks Lane. Thank you to the entire school committee based on all available data, case rates, vaccination rates among adults and the lack of danger of COVID posed to children. I strongly encourage the committee to follow the recommendation, recommendation. Steve Barrett, four seater acres lane, take the mask off kids this time. Why do we get our kids vaccinated? Who said drop the mask requirement? Thank you. This is, uh, Leslie, um, Keever. So this might be
Sure, sir. Yep.
Uh, my son is in kindergarten and having a very difficult time with reading, phonics, social, emotional skills, et cetera. He already has COVID, has robust immunity and hates the mask. There's plenty of data proving that masks are ineffective and also may cause more bacteria infections, trans natural disease cavities drastically increase carbon dioxide, increase, um, carbon dioxide levels and decrease oxygen.
That's it, right?
Yep.
Okay. So with that, I, I would seek a motion, um, to, um, accept Dessie guidance and make masking optional at the Joseph Osgood Elementary School as of February 28th, 2022.
Summum.
The motion has been made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Dial. All in favor, roll call. Mrs. Cleary.
Hi.
Ms. Cleary, aye. Mr. Dial.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange.
Hi.
Hi, Craig McCallan. Motion unanimously passes. So Dr. Sullivan, we'd ask you please implement, implement that on February 28th, 2020 at the Joseph Osgood Elementary School. The next issue is, um, regarding, regarding visitors. So, uh, as of February 28th, 2022, we will have masking optional at all our buildings. And the question is, will we allow visitors to also opt for masks? So, uh, are there any comments from the community? This Doc's calling to the comment? Okay. So, Mrs. Cleary, do you have any comments about this particular issue?
No.
Mr. Dial, do you?
Hmm. I, what is the volume of visitors we get in our schools? Is it dozens, hundreds, thousands?
I don't know. It's not a great holiday concert or whatever.
It's, it's an active, involved community coming in. Which is good. I love.
Yep.
But it's, but there are a lot of people.
No other questions?
Okay. Mr. Kearney. Mrs. St. Orange.
The prescription on these glasses is not perfect. Ran out of contacts, but, um, is there a recommendation on, I'm just like losing track.
Is there a recommendation from Dessie?
Yeah, on this. No.
No, but recommending, Dessie, Dessie still gives the recommendation that people should wear masks in school. That's the recommendation. But again, it's just, there's, they've dropped their mandates and made it a local.
We just some comments.
Okay.
So, um, we have Wesley again.
We can't take any more from Miss Keever. Miss Keever, thank you so much for participation, but you have exhausted the three comment per household limit. So we'd have to keep the, the meeting moving. Not doing this to restrict anyone's voice. It's just that, as everyone knows, these meetings can go on forever.
Six and a half hours.
Everyone has, it's sort of a stream of consciousness. People have a lot of thoughts on this. So it's, it's three limit max. So sorry, Mrs. Keever, but thank you for watching and continue to watch, please.
Uh, and we have Steve Barrett. Um, yeah.
That's number two, I think.
Yeah. And that's, uh, four seater acres lane. Sorry to go back. Chris, Chris Barrett. Um, and I'd please remove this requirement. People who want to wear a mask can. At least it's sorry wait, but I don't know if that means he's going to say something else. Um, oh, here it is. We have three kids in the school system and also have to attend indoor sports. Please make masks optional. And then we have Elizabeth Fraser, 27 Windy Hill Road. We want to go to our children's events and allow them to see our smiling faces at concerts and other events. We want to be able to participate in their education by interacting personally with their teachers. So this means likely we would have like a gym full of spectators for an athletic contest.
That's exactly.
Potentially maskless.
Exactly. You wish you would have that, but unfortunately not enough people go to it.
Well, Mr. Kearney.
The sports right now are determined by, am I
Yes, but they might have, they've come down to say that they'll, they're following Dessie's mask.
Starting the 28th.
Right. Yes. Right.
And so whether sports are ending.
So we need to presume that people will go watch games unmasked. If we allow.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. Anything else, Doc Skolons, from the community?
No, just Steve Barrett was saying, thank you.
I just stress one more time, the, that thought of people being able to wear masks. Um, it's just to emphasize that, that, you know, that, that is, we've done a nice job in the other buildings of, um, making it clear that if someone's wearing a mask, they're wearing it.
Absolutely.
And, and it doesn't have any relation, shouldn't have any relation to vaccination status. It's, it's a personal choice, you know, if you allow that. But I just want to make sure that people hear that clearly.
I went yesterday. We had kids mask on. Kids didn't. We're, we're just really trying to support that.
Okay. Let's keep on going. We've talked, we've had this conversation a number of times. So let's keep on going. Who, where, where are we? Who are we on here? Oh, Doc Skolans, anything else from?
Uh, one more. Um, Jeff, oh, thank you. Uh, 56, uh, Jeff Chubb, 56 Black Rock Road. Kids are the most important to have their masks removed. So thank you for this. My wife is active in both of our kids' classrooms. She is at the school multiple times a week assisting with teachers and helping the children. We ask that adults entering the school allowed to have mask choice. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Is that it, Doc Skolans?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to, uh, make masks optional for all visitors at all buildings as of February 28th, 2022?
Summum.
Motion is made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Dial. All in favor, roll call. Mrs. Cleary.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney, Mr. Dial, excuse me.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney. Mrs. St. Orange.
Aye.
Hi, Craig McCallan. That motion unanimously passes. So we ask you to implement that policy, Doc Skolans, on February 28th, 2022. Okay. The third issue, uh, relates to, um, oh, the COVID protocols, returning from quarantine, whether we are going to require a mask to be, uh, strongly recommended.
Uh, and I would add that if, if you don't do that, then you're really not following the protocols. I just put that out there. So I think this is really an issue of following the protocols or not following.
But let's be clear about what the protocol is. It's strongly recommended, not requiring.
That's correct. But again, the, I think just people have to keep in context that the reason that that particular protocol was put in place was to reduce the 10-day quarantine. So the, the sort of, the idea was you come back at five, but six to 10, you wear the mask. So I'm just saying that if we determine that they're not going to wear masks, we're basically making that protocol sort of irrelevant and not, um, you know, just, just know, I mean, that, that's a decision we can make, but you know, certainly it's not following that. You basically have someone who's not wearing a mask. I'm just saying.
But it's kind of, anyway, it's just a recommendation, not a requirement.
All of these are recommendations.
Yep. So. Just, just to read the, it says recommending that masking be required for students. So is the issue, the issue at hand, whether we require, somehow require students who are coming back in quarantine?
Okay, okay. Thank you. Yeah.
And then, I get, do we go around?
Uh, as long as no one has chimed in from the community on this issue, then we will.
But, but again, that's my, my point is that it is a, the protocol does require it.
Can we?
I, I understand.
They're strongly recommending that we follow the protocol.
They're strongly recommending following the protocols.
Right.
If, if we, to follow the protocol.
We have to require masks to return a quarantine.
Correct.
Right.
What about a negative COVID test?
That is what it is. Yeah.
No, return quarantine.
Right, I know. But can we, do we have the option? I mean, everything's up to us, right? Do we have the option to say if you have it, if you can produce a negative COVID test, you don't have to?
I feel like that's a, that's going to have implications on like, you know, nursing staff.
Yeah, that, that's, that's where I was going to go with this. Uh, if we have a requirement, then we need to have an enforceability. And I don't think, I, I think we should expect families to be responsible and as they're coming back from quarantine, do the right things. But I don't think it's appropriate to put that on the school to police that and say, hey, you're back for quarantine on day three, where's your mask?
It'd be difficult to produce.
And, and, and I think that if such a requirement would create an obligation on the schools that it would be next to impossible to.
Yeah. And I think Mr. Dial cites the exact reason why Dessie changed its, uh, language initially from, uh, uh, requiring unvaccinated students to wear masks to strongly recommend unvaccinated students to wear masks, you know, when you reach that 80% threshold. Cause there's an enforcement issue there.
There, there is, but it's also a, um, you know, it's a, it's a moral imperative for people to try to follow things that, you know, as a school community we put in place. So I would hope that.
But it's easier to police these two kids after five days.
Oh, no, we would work to do it. I'm not saying we wouldn't do, we will.
Not being able to disclose who's vaccinated versus unvaccinated and like guessing how many kids are supposed, like that is the enforcement issue. This is then an enforcement issue really.
So.
I mean, it's an enforcement issue when someone's like a real, like, takes their heels in.
So why don't you have all your thoughts here? We'll go over and we always do. We're getting, getting like, it's getting into haywire here.
You're losing control.
Chaos.
This is an interesting one.
So what, what are your thoughts, Mr. Cleary? I don't agree with you.
I think we should, we should adhere to the guidance and require students coming back from their five-day quarantine to wear a mask for however long, I think.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Cleary. Mr. Dial.
I guess if, if that were the policy, what would the, what would the operational implementation of that?
Well, again, we do get information when, um, someone has, uh, COVID, that we're provided it. And that is, we would, we would work with the family, just as we have in all contexts, to make sure that the, the quarantine protocol was followed. We would make, we would, we would make sure that that was, that, you know, that that person wore a mask in, in, in classrooms.
That's not even, so would you, would this be a communication with the, the teacher or various teachers? Um, and then they'd have to keep track of which students are on which days?
It would have to be the people who are privileged to be the principal and the nurse. And it would have to be the principal sort of working to, with the family to make sure it happened because right now we don't have that. It's the same situation we were in when we did, we did have that time period where we had the unvaccinated individuals. We don't really have legal, um.
Right. But that, I, I think that one, well, I don't, I don't want to distinguish that. Just don't keep us on the issue at hand. But let's say Johnny is coming back on day six after COVID. He walks into the building unless
The nurses.
Mr. Scott or the nurse sees and it validates throughout the day that the mask is on.
Well, a-again, that, I did say it would be difficult to police, but it would be a communication with the principal or the nurse to the family that we need to work together here. And then of course, the principal is in our rooms. And the principal could discreetly work with that individual to, to make sure that, you know, the kid, of course, may work with a little kid.
I was going to say, they're probably announcing they're back from COVID anyway, but anything like every single
They, they are, but I think to your point, it's, you know, you're, you're asking good questions because this is, these are the obstacles that we would run up against. Um, rub up against in terms of the, uh, you know, making sure that we had, um, we had, we were policing it properly. It was difficult.
So I, I guess where, where I'm thinking on this is that it creates operational difficulties.
We do that. I mean, we do that now. We have kids come back and we do work with families to, to try to, try to help that. We do, we, we do a good job. So then it is, there are rare circumstances that I, I'm not aware of. I don't know any circumstances where we've had an issue, just to put it out there.
Well, that's, that's helpful. The other thing I worry about is it creates a disincentive for people to report, um, because they might not want to do that.
The difference is, of course, everybody wears masks now.
Yes.
And they, you know, they, they weren't, they didn't have to wear masks. So that wouldn't happen.
But anyway.
So you, you know, possibly. But again, there, there, I go back to, we have kids wear masks and not wear a mask. It doesn't necessarily line up to anything. It's just, it's a family choice or it's a steam choice in the older levels. It, it's a, it's a real mix. So, so it's not necessarily an identifiable feature.
Okay. Um, I think I'm going on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dial. Mr. Kearney. Um, Mrs. St. Orange.
I think it makes sense to follow the guidance.
Is that all?
That's all.
Okay. Thanks, Mrs. St. Orange.
And we have another comment.
Okay.
Regarding masks.
Okay.
From 210 Lambert's Lane. If someone is symptomatic and tested negatively, is this necessary, especially if someone has natural infection in the past? Are we able to put a date on this to reconsider again if we foresee? If you vote yes on this, putting a date to reconsider on this would allow us to revisit without this being implemented forever for the children.
If someone's symptomatic.
Oh, asymptomatic. Sorry. She said.
Okay. Cause it's a different protocol for symptomatic. All right. So thank you for the correction. Um, well, you know, look, here, here are the times when I'm not an epidemiologist. I just want to make sure if it knows that clearly, but I, my understanding is that the reason that they're not, um, requiring testing is that it can stay in someone's system and it will be a false, you know, that from the home testing can be a false test. A false reading of, um, well, not false. It's in your system. It's just not necessarily a requirement to, to return. Remember, all this is based on risk mitigation. It really is. I mean, if you have five days and you're wearing a mask, they're, they're, what they're looking at is they're looking at the most infectious periods. Typically, when someone is transferring it, which we know is a couple of days before. And then according to the guidance that led them to say five days, it's within those days. And then they believe that wearing the mask will provide a little more, um, protection from someone we know has COVID spreading it. Um, certainly not as much protection as a 10-day quarantine, but it's all balanced on the in-person learning requirement, the social, emotional needs of the student, the, the, um, the Omicron variant and it's, it's, um, it's, it's the danger they have to, to, to children. I mean, it was, this whole thing was adjusted during Omicron. So all of these things and there's probably more factors too, that have just not flashing in my head, but it's all based on sort of a risk mitigation strategy. Um, and I think I'm correct in that, although I'm not an epidemiologist, but that's, that's pretty, uh, pretty straightforward.
Okay. Anything else, Doc Skolans? Uh, is there a motion to, uh, adopt the guidance and make masking required uh, on day six through 10 upon return from a COVID quarantine? Motion has been made by Mrs. Cleary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. St. Orange. All in favor, roll call. Mrs. Cleary.
Aye.
Mr. Dial.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange.
Aye.
Craig McCallan. Aye. Motion passes by a vote of three to two. So we will follow the guidance.
Follow, we're going to, so we're going to follow the COVID-19 scenarios.
That's correct. Okay. Uh, the fourth issue relates to the nurse's office, correct?
Yes.
So this discussed whether or not, uh, this, excuse me, focuses on whether or not we will require masks when individuals are at the nurse's office. And it's strongly recommended, so similar, same recommendation, strongly recommended that we require them in the nurse's office. Um, we have been requiring them in the nurse's office, obviously, I mean, had to, um, and, uh, I don't know if there are any comments, Dr. Skolans, that you see from anyone? Okay. So we'll go right to Mrs. Cleary.
So, I feel like this is, this is something that makes sense to me. Why not? But I also feel like if you're going to the nurse's office because you need a Band-Aid, you don't need to waste a mask.
Can I just say something about that?
Yeah.
Most level-headed nurses have
Most level-headed nurses have baggies of Band-Aids distributed to classrooms, and this year especially, we've really cut down on. Nurse visits for things such as Band-Aids or lost teeth, so most kids who are going to the nurse are going because they feel picky.
Okay.
Good.
Just as someone on the inside.
Yeah, I love an insider.
Now, remember, this is a, this is a scenario where, you know, if you do decide this, obviously. As we we are on the buses, because you're gonna have students have to wear masks on the buses eventually. As, you know, there's sort of a mental thing that happens and you say, oh, I'm not gonna wear a mask, and then I'm on the bus. So we have lots of masks that we're gonna be giving kids a- as they need. With younger kids, there's a bit of a storage issue with masks. You come in with a mask on the bus, right, but you you're taking the mask off in school, where's that mask going?
I know, that's what kills me. I hate the waste. I hate the waste.
Well, but but, you know, let's make sure you bring someone. So Dear Hill has worked this through. Yeah, well, we're working, we're gonna work it through and 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 figure out, figure out exactly what be, but the my point, I'm done going off on a tangent. My point is, the nurse's office, if you decide this, will have masks available for students. They're they're gonna have to.
Yeah.
Um, as they do now, but they're really gonna have to, and they recognize that.
Yeah, well, for me, it's like very frustrating to see all the disposable masks everywhere when I'm walking around. And that is one thing that is exacerbated by like a requirement like this, that's, well, wouldn't happen in the nurse's office, but the bus thing will be an issue.
We've been getting our masks for years, I think.
But it's, yeah, it's just like, so it's like.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
They're like the new plastic bags. All right, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleary. Mr. Dial.
This makes sense to me. You aren't feeling good, go to the nurse. Can't hear a sec, no mask. It's easy to police, easy to implement, a lot of masks there. Seems like a no brainer.
Frank and Bremby, Mr. Dial, thank you, Mr. Dial. Mr. Keery.
I agree with you, Lance, um, but I do want to, I do want. I just want everyone to know that the nursing office, just, there's no ventilation. And my kid was in there for more than a minute, called me.
Ever the middle school office?
Yeah. It's just, there's no way, there's no flow in there. It's just, I I mean.
It's limited. Well, we have, we have brought it up to a point where it's the best it can be.
Right.
Um, but you're you're correct, as we, there's some building limitations with the window.
Yeah, it's just, and until, so.
That's why it's on a capitalist.
It it is on the capitalist to fix it. I I do know that, but I do really, uh, I I agree with you, but they. You know, if you're sick, you probably have a mask on, it's easy to police. I just wanna make sure that the community knows that our nurse, our nurse's office offices. They're just not up to standard. That we're working on. And I definitely would want my child to be in that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keery. Mrs. Saint Orange.
I think this makes complete sense, if, you know, COVID or not, if you're not feeling well, let's not spread germs to other people. I don't want your own blood.
Thank you, Mrs. Saint Orange. I have nothing to say. Is there a motion on the floor to?
Uh, Stephanie Saunders.
Okay.
Ten Stratford Terrace, are reusable masks allowed in the nurse's office? My kindergarten is likely going to have. One around his neck all day anyways.
Are reusable masks? Oh, yes, no, no, I didn't mean to, um, I didn't mean to say that. I mean, I I know that some students do will have the ability to. I just know in kids, they 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 lose masks. I just wanted to make the point to anybody out there. That we will have masks available, should they need one. I think that's great that your your child does that.
Yeah, I think too, when you go to hospital or doctor's office, you can't wear your your own mask.
Oh, um. Well, like I said, we will have masks, so if if I I leave that, that's not something I ask the nurses specifically, so maybe I'm projecting here. I figured they would, but if that's not something they're comfortable with, the nurse will give them another mask to wear. I do know, I do, I do know what you mean, because one time I was testing somewhere. I can't remember what it was. But somebody made me take off my mask and put a new mask on somewhere, so that that could possibly be a word call, I'm unaware of.
Um, and then we have Elizabeth Fraser, twenty seven Windy Hill Road, at my comment limit. Um, first, thanks again to this great committee. You are so respectful of each other's opinions, and I hope. You all continue to serve the town for many years to come. I don't think it's necessary to wear a mask in the nurse's office. I agree with this. Cleary is a wasteful use of masks, particularly since the students are going to be interacting with each other all day. What is wearing a mask in the nurse's office supposed to do?
Is that a touch on? Okay, thank you, Ms. Fraser. Is there a motion on the floor to uh, accept the guidance and require masking? Within nurses' offices at all buildings in the district? The motion has been made by Mrs. Saint Orange. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cleary. All in favor? Roll call, Mrs. Cleary.
Aye.
Mr. Dial.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mrs. Saint Orange.
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan, that motion actually passes, Dr. Sullivan, so we'd ask you to please admit that.
Thank you. That is, that is, so we have, to recap, yes, lifting the mask requirement on February twenty eighth, that is good. Yes, on February twenty eighth, all visitors are entitled to choose if they will wear a mask or not. In all of our school settings. Number three, yes, we are gonna follow the Desi um, protocols and scenarios. Uh, school year twenty one, twenty two, which includes having. Students and staff wear masks for five, up to five days when they come back from a quarantine. And then finally, in accordance with DPH recommendations, we are requiring. Masks in nurses' offices throughout the district until.
And if that changes, that's so, maybe not to a potential.
Yeah, I mean, I I think right now it's it's a local decision. My guess is that. Well, I mean, i- if things change, I'll always bring it to you, but if if things go well, moving forward, it may be a time when we have to bring it up ourselves. To determine if we're gonna continue it or not.
Well, we'll be looking forward to that conversation.
I would, I would love to have that conversation.
Masks in schools, it's amazing, it's a great, it's a fascinating subject.
Yeah.
So, um, all right, well, uh, let's move on, Dr. Sullivan, to the next to the last item in the superintendent's report.
Wow, you're still up?
We sure do.
Yeah, so the next item is, um, and I guess before I turn it over to Sue Owen to talk a little bit about this. Um, I just want to once again thank the community for their patience and understanding. Uh, in dealing with our bus shortage crisis. I want you to know we've been working diligently to uh, to. First of all, recruit drivers, train drivers when we needed. Our team of drivers have done a really excellent job, although I know that's cold comfort for some folks. Because it is an inconvenience for sure, but from our view, I I know what they're, they had to do to make this work. And they've done a phenomenal job, and that includes under our terror finance operation, Sue Owen. So Sue, I'll turn it over to you, just to give a an update on where we are with buses, so maybe where we are currently. And what we see in the coming weeks, based on and why we see that.
Sure. Um, so we did have a shortage of two bus drivers, um, one resigned, one had a medical, um, medical leave. We have since. Um, had a bus driver with medical leave returned, so that's good. So instead of two routes or two buses being doubled up. Um, we're currently only one, I believe it's bus, bus six, I think bus seven is covering. The AM and bus two is covering the PM or vice versa, um, so it's just one bus route now that's affected. It is still affecting.
Yeah, it's cold comfort if you're on bus six or bus seven.
Correct, um, we do have three potential new hires, um, they are in training right now. We have one that's pretty close to being done. They have to put in sixty hours and they have that actually have to, based on the registry, go in and get their, get their tests, so. Um, after their sixty hours of training, it'll depend on how fast their registry is responding to protests. Um, but we're hopeful that by the second week of March, we will have at least one behind the wheel. Um, possibly two or three, um, but maybe, um, probably by April first, we will have three, as long as they pass their driver's test.
So by the middle, by the, your thought is right now?
By the middle of March, um, we'll be back to, everyone has their own, their own master, there's no doubling up, um, and then we'll have. Um, two more coming on board, so we'll have a backup.
That's correct.
We'll have someone to do field trips and athletics, we're running short on as well, so.
Great.
That's the plan.
And that's that's huge, because.
Have to pass their CDL.
We're we're not alone in our, in our shortage, so there's a competition for these drivers. Good that we're able to provide that.
Absolutely, and I think the shortage has caused people to have concerns about the timing and everything, and I think, uh, Mrs. Saunders has a comment that she. Has been patiently waiting to share with us relating to. Rectifying that issue a little bit for people.
Um, Stephanie Saunders, um, hi, just ten Stratford Terrace. If this hasn't been discussed already, I would love to hear if we will adopt a mobile app to track the buses, thanks.
So, short answer is yes, um, don't have it right now. Um, this year, we have a brand new transportation supervisor, and we have, um, for the first time, our own software that runs our transportation. Um, there's a module that comes with that transportation software, which does have the mobile app, so you can track the buses, um. So we're still going through unknown training with this new software. Um, once we get that under our belt, it it could, it could come as soon as September, I'm not quite sure yet. So, um, that's the short answer. I mean, at some point, we will definitely have it.
There's no way to roll it out this year?
Currently, from for the remainder of the year, no, we haven't.
It wasn't in the software package. I knew it was available.
We have purchased that module, we we wanted to start out with phase one, which is what they recommend, is just get the routing software down. Um, once you get the ground, you know, basics of it, you can then start adding to it.
Just for folks to just, I'm sorry. Just for folks to rewind a little bit, if you remember, two community members, the Lairds. Did, they're, they were amazing, and thank, you know. Goodness for them, because they really helped us out when we didn't have a software that was robust enough to create this. We can't rely on the goodness of really amazing and talented people in our community. Going forward, so we did come up with a new software that does a great job. Doing that, but it would plotting routes and. But it is a process, uh, unloading it, and um. That is just a feature that we haven't put in yet, but I think it's a great idea. I I know from a parent's perspective, certainly during this time, it would have been really helpful, like, I recognize that, because we have sort of a. Gray area about timing for buses, when you have that double, double up route scenario. So it would be nice, I can understand why it would be really nice to know what exactly what the bus is, but it's probably nice to know at all times anyway. So I think it's it's something that you certainly want to be as aggressive as we can to put it in.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. If we could be as aggressive as possible with that, I think excellent idea, and this day and age is something to me would would. Seemingly very simple to implement.
That's phenomenal. Let's do that.
Yes.
No, it's open to learning curve, so the software, the Transfinder software, it's a year's worth of training, just for the basic setup, so.
And we also switched midstream with transportation supervisors too.
So.
I don't want to keep throwing excuses at us, but the bus scenario is really difficult this year.
We can do it, though. We've moved.
Absolutely.
Transportation, we we can do it.
Yeah, and he's an all-star director too.
Okay, um, does that conclude the superintendent's report?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Uh, we'll move into the finance update and turn the meeting over to our Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Zidane.
Do you want to share?
Sure. Which which.
I can share, no, I can share if you want to, let me.
Oh, yeah.
I'm disabled.
I will give you the power. Go host.
So this is the. January, um, finance report, just to give you an update of how how the budget is moving along. The school budget, as of January thirty first, we've expended a little over ten million, um, out of our twenty one million dollar budget. Um, which is about fifty five point five percent expended throughout the year, and we are fifty percent of the year, so we're. We're on target as usual, we're we're actually a little ahead of the game. Um, I I list what we've been coming with supporting materials and purchase orders, one point five. Um, remaining balance, now to end of June, we have a remaining balance of nine point six million. Um, to cover our salaries and any other purchases that are unanticipated. The spent tuition, um, again. Spent tuition again, I'll watch you closely, because we did have a four hundred thousand dollar jump. Um, we're still at the four hundred twenty six thousand dollar shortfall, there has been no other changes, no other students, um, addressing in and out of special. Tuition schools, um, so for right now, we're we're special education is stable, um, and short of four hundred twenty six thousand, which is not a problem. Um, just I won't put that out there, that we we usually run deficit almost every year, because we can we can never anticipate. A a child moving in or a child having to go out on district. I've given you, um, percentages based on each school. Um, checking doing each month. Um, so yeah, we're fifty eight percent doing here, and if you look, you can see, um, Osgood did a little high, we're at forty eight percent. Um, and the high schools are fifty percent, so we're again, um, we're ahead of the game, we're not, we haven't expanded fifty eight percent. The breaker has changed, um, that you felt there, so people reminded that we have it. Capital Outlay for this year, um, air handlers were still in the process of reconfiguring the specs. Um, to do the D N L air handlers, the middle school, high school handle, air handlers. Um, the Osgood trickleheads, they began to work for the summer break, they're going to finish the work next week. The turf and track. Um, is on its way out to bed now, it's being advertised. Um, the documents will be reviewed, we forgot the date, I think it's been opening at April fourth. So I'm excited about that, to get that up and rolling. The wood shop dust collection system is complete and working great. Doorflops, um, moving doorflops, we added, they begin to work December break, and they're. Um, planning on finishing next week during the break. The science lab on furniture here, they're waiting to install, waiting for farmers to come in. Um, do some of the groundwork, I think it's gonna start actually next week, a lot of projects going on during our February break. Up high technology, we have purchased some items. And the other two were the promo license facilities, which is why I've been paying for for this year. Next year, the, this is the capital outway that we put forward, we met with capital outlay committee. Um, discuss our needs, we get, we have some homework, we have some questions that we need to answer and put forward, um, but these are all prioritized. As a subcommittee, we prioritized, um. Capital Outlay Committee didn't quite agree with our prioritization, they thought we should have had it in a different order, um, but that's okay. We we've got to come back to the table and meet with them again to finalize what are, I think they said we have, they have a total of.
Two, one twenty.
They have two million, just about two million to spend, and they request a four million, so. Um, definitely have to do some, um, rethinking prioritizing, it it, the town as a whole, not just for the school.
And they were really looking at our maintenance.
They were very interested in more of the maintenance of the buildings versus furniture or. Bands or curtains, they want, they want it in maintenance stuff.
And they were saying that, because some of that has been sort of given short shrift over the years, but we brought up that. We did have a lot of maintenance issues.
Yes.
Last year, which is why we put some of the other issues.
Right, we keep putting, putting those other issues to the next gen, to the next gen, to the next gen, because we're doing the maintenance at some point, we've done it.
Well, historically, it's been the opposite, so that was an interesting discussion. And I, we really appreciate, we appreciate that, we appreciate you.
Also, the curtains are like a major safety issue, so I feel like those shouldn't be listed as if they're like decorative or quietly closer.
Yeah, there's really safety shades.
Yeah, they're not, I don't know.
They're safety shades.
Just making sure, because that's.
No, they're safety shades, um. I also give you again, the separate for the electric, um, just so we can follow along each month, how it's going with electric. Um, electric for the month of December, where, um. Uh, compared to last year, we've also had a very cold winter.
Awesome, we have a little.
Correct.
It's a little uneven heating. Yeah, well, I think that would be, you know, we get to. Yeah, well, I think that would be, you know, get to.
So, then we have, we have the grant, which, you know, subsidizes our school budget, funding other things, so we have asset grants, we have some school program grants, we have title one, we have a Medco grant, and we have two new American Rescue Plan grants that we're working through now. Grants again, employee pockets of 14.7 FTEs in our, in our district, so it does help fund some more employee staffing. Revolving accounts, again, money that comes in and goes back, right back out, so it would be transportation, kindergarten, I give you the balances on, on these. We know that athletics is running high, kindergarten should be going down by the time we finish the year out, we're already collecting fees for the following year, so it's kind of a mixed number. School transportation as well, we put the remainder of the year with our blessing fees coming through. And the athletic revolving, we are in a process of doing some upgrades there too as well, and I've listed them below. Say, the revolving accounts come from 13.9 FTEs in our district, so retrodevelopment definitely helps fund some of our staff needs. And again, athletic revolving is going through some upgrades, say, for football goals, multi-purpose netting system. We put in $12,000 for the upgrade to the Milken Field, and then the fitness center. The summer, it's going to be a big summer renovation project, they're going to buy some new treadmills, stationary bikes, and other fitness equipment, which will happen over the summer. Cafeteria as well, we're expanding our cafeteria, where we're adding a snack room, so we can kind of spread the students out, we're not so crammed in that one way in, one way out cafeteria. We upgraded the website, we purchased four TV screens that are going up during February break, so that's exciting. We've ordered an elevator vending machine that can have reimbursable meals, kitchen meals.
It's not an elevator vending machine, right?
It's called an elevator.
But it doesn't, it doesn't let people up and down, does it?
No.
Like, if you need like a twixt bar between floors three and seven?
You just call it, it comes down. It'll be, okay, we'll have sandwiches.
Fruits, you can have anything we want.
And what is that, when we look at?
We've ordered it, we purchased it, it's a six, eight months.
Yeah, let's, do we have the name of it, just so I can Google?
I don't have it.
Okay.
Sorry, I can get it too far.
Yeah, that's great.
And we're actually doing a whole new serving line, including salad bars and hot, cold entries, and like I said, we're adding a room up there to alleviate the, the crowd dashing in and out one entrance, so that's all happening over the summer months as well. Yes. And then at the high school, it's exciting that we've purchased two TV screens, one to go in the main entrance for informational purposes, and one to go with the bus entrance. So, that, that is also happening next week, so all our TV screens should be up, but finished across next week. And that concludes the January budget.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Are there any questions, Ms. Owen, Mr. Carey? Mr. Dial?
It's, what, Ms. Owen, you indicated we're running under budget. Do you have a pro forma of where we end up if things continue at this pace? If we end up with a surplus, that that number would be?
I don't. Because we're at, we're at 50% throughout the year, but what happens, it comes, comes in play as our salaries, we have that lump sum payment in June, so that kind of skews, you know, 58%. Because when we hit, when we hit June month, you know, they get six paychecks, so typically, we've ended the year with anywhere from $100,000 or less. And what we just do with it is we'll find a tuition for the following year, which helps us in the next budget. My guess is the 400,000 something around the deficit instead, and then the, I notice our, like our customer supplies and materials, basically, those account to run on one deficit, so we may, may not have a surplus of money at the end of the year.
The, the, the reason I ask is because we're thinking of our next agenda item, we're going to be talking about potential loopholes.
Thank you, Mr. Dial, Mr. Carey.
Yeah, as far as revolving accounts go, there's quite a few dollars in each account. And maybe we can talk about this, like, so. And one of the things that, like I was talking about, advocating for would be like intermueller sports, after-school programs. And I guess, like, we could probably look to specific items in this fund balances to kind of fund some of those. You see that, right? I mean, I guess, like, what, if there's money sitting in these accounts, you know, we should use it, we should do something. We have $355,000 in the school lunch program, we're spending maybe, you know, $100,000 or so, so there's this 255. You know, the, the school athletics has 258 in it, you know, between there, you get a half a million dollars. You know, I just think that, you know, back to the wellness, you know, we talked about, and we'll talk about the other side, we try to hire. You know, I can't have this enough of wellness for kids right now. So, with that said, I'd like to work with you to come up with some plans for some after-school programs, and I just don't know where to look for those programs. And I guess the question would be is, we could find some money in some of these revolving accounts, right?
So, you can't take athletic money and put it towards.
Intermueller sports?
With, you put towards sports.
Okay.
Okay. You do have an account here called the middle school, intermueller revolving account, there's $9,000, almost $10,000 in there. You also have to remember that the athletic revolving, the transportation revolving, the cafeteria revolving, all those, those accounts fund staff.
Right.
So.
Well, that's what I've been looking at.
We've got to fund staff, staff salaries from now till June.
And we are working on our stipends too moving forward.
So, when I have to care, if it's solely paid from this account, so their salaries aren't coming in there. So, out of that money, we still have to pay, like, for the four more months of salaries.
Right.
So, it is going to be somewhat.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. I just think that we should look, look at this money, we got $30,000 in school committee gives, is that being used, so. Like, there's a lot of money here, I just want to make sure that we're using the money, it's not sitting in the bank.
With a particular outlook and wealth.
Right.
I think this is one, I think it is suitable for a subcommittee discussion. Can we, can we raise it there? No, I'm not, I feel like I'm trying to pick on this meeting.
No, 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 it's fine, it's just that I'd like people to stay aware.
Longer than I thought tonight.
You know, and I agree, I just, I just want, you know, folks to know, because, you know, we sit on this committee, and thank you for coming to the U.S. meeting. And we, it's just, I'm just trying to learn with the community, because like, I just feel like it's just, there's not enough peoples on that committee, like, it's a lot, it's a big budget, it's $22 million that two, three, four people are discussing, and I just don't think there's enough community outreach to try to get some ideas on what we can do with the money. That's, that's all I'm saying, so everybody's, this is everybody's money, you know, so what I'm trying to say to the community is, you know, look at these and say, if you have an idea that's going to make kids' lives better, please bring it to our table.
Excellent.
And run for school committee.
Yes, Mrs. Stenoff, do you have any questions for Mrs. Owen?
I do not.
Thank you, Mrs. Stenoff, neither do I, but I know that Ms. Owen now has the, the discussion of the FY23.
We've been running long, so we met as a subcommittee, we went over, you know, we're thoughtful on, we, we'll be backing up, we have met with the town, town manager and town accountant. They're willing to give us, see if I get to the bottom of this, I should say willing, what they've allocated is $660,920. We were looking for about 1.2, which initially was a 5.85% increase. We went back as a group and reviewed some of our, our asks and our wants, see what we could do, we went back into our rollover costs, and we'll go up to the top. If you notice, it was, it wasn't 942, it's now at 780. Obviously, that, you know, it's an adjusted potential projected colon, nothing else has changed in that area, the other big change was, and we talked about it earlier, we had, we had an ask of a $60,000 computer science teacher, but after administration and department had to met and discussed, you saw the presentation earlier, that we are moving forward, but we can use our existing staff for at least next year, and this computer science teacher may be forthcoming in '24.
Right. Being fiscally conscious, still getting what we, what we're ready for.
Right. And, and, you know, we discussed it, and there, there isn't anywhere, this is a very lean budget, there isn't anywhere else for us to cut. We, we have to have a grade two teacher in Osgood, just because of class size, and we just don't, based on our math scores, we have to have a math specialist in that school.
In Nice.
Anyway, and then the full day kindergarten, it says begin, but we began last year, it, you know, '25, and this '25 would probably drop the tuition by another $200 per family. So, the bottom line now, of what we're looking at is a 4.68, it's still not the 3.04. What I show up for now is, instead of a $600,000, it's more of a $350,000 shortfall. And I know advisory is waiting to hear from us, so this was a discussion point, I wanted to, to meet with the whole committee before we passed our information on, just so we were informed here before we sent it off, I'm going to probably call from Hyatt tomorrow and just say, you know, I'm sending this off to you. This is, this is, at this point, we feel best we can do with what we need to, so, I don't know if there's any questions on that.
Any questions at this time on the preliminary FY23 budget review, Mr. Carey?
So, my, what I feel like is important to note is that simply steps and lane is 942.5, and that's included, right, in the request? So, like, the original cost for the.
I'm not going to correct you.
No, it's okay, I want you to.
Well, what in the packet last week was the 942, when we met yesterday as a committee, we looked at it, and it's now at 780 enrollment cost.
Ah, okay, yeah, but still, that's more than.
It's more than what they give.
We're able to, at this point, expect the town can accommodate. So, just keeping our staff employed.
Yeah, right.
Costs more.
Right, right.
Than what the town is able to commit to at this time.
And the, you know, and this is a process.
Right, of course, but I just feel like that's important for people to understand, if there's anyone still watching. That this is like, to, to your point, a very lean budget.
Yes.
And it still doesn't keep us operating.
Right.
And all of our bottom units right now are in negotiations.
Oh.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Dial?
No comments, questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Dial, Mr. Carey.
I'm real quick to echo Ashley's point. There's two things on there, I mean, what are you going to, not have a teacher? And, and a math specialist, I mean, we're not asking.
Was enrollment consideration than the math specialist?
Right, I mean, if that was my ask, we'd have a human, human resources director, we'd have a technology director, we have the wellness director, we don't, everything that we need to run a school, we don't have. You know, just, just to let you know, Susan, I appreciate the work that you're doing, because this is not easy, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Mrs. Stenoff?
So, I guess just to clear, I know that we go through this each year, but it's enough time that I don't recall the exact process. So, you have made revisions, right, and you go back to the town tomorrow, and then what happens from there? What are they, what are we expecting to hear?
Well, we have to meet with advisory.
Okay.
Which, we're trying to get that scheduled.
Early March, they want to do it early March. I'm sure they want.
They want to do it tonight, this meeting, and decided not.
I, I, I refuse to acquiesce to that request, because. So, we appreciate much for us. We got educators here, we got people that are working full-time jobs, they can't go to meetings till 11 o'clock at night.
So, I did, I did promise advisory that we would send them at least a copy of this, so they have an idea of what we're looking at. And I definitely will reach out to town accountant tomorrow, so he can see that we've made, you know, we've made some conscious decisions on trying to be, you know, collaborative with the town and what they can offer.
And just to build on, Ms. Stenoff, what happens next, after, after going to advisory?
Public forum.
We have to have a public, right, so we have to advertise that through the public forum, and then, and then it really, it really comes down to town meeting.
Yeah, well, you have that budget calendar.
Select board.
Select board, goes to select board. And that's, sorry.
Advisory, public forum, select.
So, if we can't come to agreement, the town, the town meeting, they'll put forth what they want to offer us, and we'll put forth what we want.
And we could have stronger aspect of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stenoff. I have no questions. Thank you, Ms. Owen. There's one more item, I think, on the finance update, which the secretary, which was raised last meeting, and we brought this right up at your request, but I think it was Clary.
Thank you.
Substitute teachers, so now we, we, you know, we talked about substitute nurses, just because we were hired, we couldn't get any nurses, we were looking at agencies. So, I did a quick survey, I was served, which shows you some of the surrounding districts, I couldn't get answers from everyone, but here you can see, we're paying our substitute teachers, we don't require them to be certified. We pay them $80 a day, which is the minimum wage. And you can see what some of the other districts, I mean, some of the districts do require sort of certified teachers. I think the only district that's less than us is Tietua, everything else is 80, 90, 95, 100, you can see here what they are, I also have. I put together, if I can find it, just real quick.
Cost per building.
Cost per building.
If we.
So, this shows you last year what each school spent for the daily stuff, so this is the $80 a day, so it was 143 subs, oh, that's good, and you could, you could see the numbers. And then I estimated, okay, if we update from 80 to 90, it would be about a $5,000 increase, if we updated to 95, it would be about $7,400, so that's 200 a day, it's $10,000. Then again, it impacts the budget. $4,000 to $5,000 isn't too impactful to move just to a 90.
I thought it was actually more, I was pleased to see this.
How many hours do they work?
They work the regular school day, so it's 6.6. And then you can tell what it starts, leave it at that, right? This year, just to date, what we've spent from September to now, so it's not a full, it's not a full, it's not a full snapshot of the year, it's just where we are currently. So, it gives you an idea of what, what the cost would be if we increased it, definitely, definitely wouldn't recommend increasing this, this budget cycle, possibly for '23. But this is just up for discussion, it's just a comparison, because we, we are underfunding, under as well, underfunding our substitutes, I mean, like I said, $80 a day isn't even minimum wage.
Sure.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Owen on this issue, Mr. Carey?
He said we can't do it this budget cycle. We're going into a budget cycle where we're not even meeting our.
Correct, 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 I know, and that's why, you know, I didn't put anything forward for, and to vote a recommendation, because it's more of a topic of discussion, and, you know, do we want it at least, or something?
So, we have the question would be to. Yeah, I was, I was going to apologize.
That's okay, go ahead, you can move on for me.
Okay, Mr. Dial, we're getting too soon, Mr. Carey.
Ms. Owen, I guess, two questions, one, can we not find $5,000 somewhere?
Yes, I, I mean, it's need be, yes, I mean, we could all, I could also, also do some type of, a spending freeze, or a light spending freeze, we'll say.
Because if we're talking $5,000, that seems like something in a $21 million budget, we could probably shoulder, and I guess, Dr. Sullivan. And I guess, Dr. Sullivan and, and Dr. Scous, what's our, are we seeing the impact in finding suitable substitute teachers? Are we able to find them and, because we don't want us to be on so far at the bottom end of the pay scale that we're unable to respond to this?
It's been tough with, you know, through COVID, through other, other scenarios, you know, with people having to care for, teachers having to care for their loved ones. You know, obviously the tenants as well, the staff members, so it's hard to discern that from, oh, yeah, an old shortage, but to, to just answer your question, yes.
Do we compete with these other jurisdictions for, and I'm not sure how substitute teacher are retained, do we compete with these other areas for the same substitute teachers?
Yes, we do.
So having us on the lower end of the spectrum makes us.
Doesn't help us because, you know, all, all districts are struggling with substitute, just like all jobs.
Just like the budget, everything.
Everything, everywhere you go, right, there's the shortage of staffing, definitely.
So I, I would be supportive of us trying to figure out a way to change that as soon as we can, even if it's this budget cycle, subject to being able to fund it.
Thank you, Mr. D, Mr. Dial, Mr. Carey.
I also wanted to make a suggestion, do you see, Dr. Sullivan, you see it going down because of COVID relating, like, is, is this more than the last couple of years? Because.
What do you mean going, what do you mean by going?
Have we needed more substitutes recently than we have in the past in normal years?
You know, I don't have that data, I, my, my, my thought from what, and you can help me with this too, is, yes.
Okay.
That we've had a more limited pool, from what I'm hearing from principals, but it's also been, it's been tighter because there's been a need that's been greater. So it's hard to discern if it's a lower pool, or if it's just a tighter need and it's, it's servicing that.
Right.
We're having more trouble getting substitutes, absolutely. You know, first of all, I, I'd like to say thank you to all the substitute teachers out there because they, they, you know, it's not, it's not an easy gig. Going into a classroom with kids that know you're at a disadvantage, kind of help a lot with substitutes. That said, I mean, I, I, I agree with Lance, I think that, you know, in that budget, that we, we should be competitive. And we should have one in front of it, because if you do six and a half, you're at minimum wage. And that's, you know, these folks at Colston, we, we should show some respect and look to. I'd like to say that, you know, you're the top end, because then you get the best, you get the best of the best. I think that's what we deserve for our kids.
We, I mean, if it's, if it's the will of the committee, we could come back with a plan with, with some numbers for you. But I don't want to.
Yeah.
Thoughts.
Let's hear from Mrs. St. Onge.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm.
Well, I'm, I know you were done yet. What's that?
I'm good.
I'm just waiting to see if you're done.
I'm good, yeah.
I'm hesitant to, to go ahead with this cycle and, and then, and then I, because I'm wondering about the implications of a spending freeze. I just think like, in my experience, when there's a spending freeze, I can't get new books, you know? Like, that's, it maybe seems so silly and little, and that's not even a huge expense, but although those little expenses, when a, when a freeze happens, affect teachers, right, so what would that look like? If we found five thousand dollars, and then you said you'd have, you should put like a free, a spending.
It would be a light freeze, so.
I don't know, any kind of freeze feels.
It would be conscious things that were necessity.
Okay.
You know, like, we just had your question, you know, someone wanted individual print. That can, I mean, it's important, what it can wait.
So it takes a point, you know, that's also an estimate.
This is an estimate, right.
And it's somewhat of a guess, so, so I mean, really, where it could be, it could be more.
Plus, it's also, at this point in the year, we don't have a full year that we need to find, right? But we're going to June thirty, that's a, it's a lot of things.
So, I mean, FY twenty-one gives you the full, a full year, but it wasn't a normal year.
I don't think that's a representative.
Right, it wasn't a normal year, so.
Right.
We don't necessarily know what a normal year is going to look like.
What's a normal year?
This year isn't going to be a normal year just because of COVID.
Okay. So. I think we, but I think the general consensus, no, that's not true, that's not accurate statement. Chair McCollum just said, as he exited to use the restroom, that he is in favor of putting a plan together to figure out how to put this into motion sooner than the next budget cycle. I too am in favor of that, and Paul seems to be in favor of that. You're also in favor of that?
I think a, a plan should be discussed. I would obviously be in favor of a plan.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean, I vote yes, but I think that we need to know, okay, if a plan is put in, yeah, class management analysis, what are the implications? Yes, we want to pay our substitutes fairly, but we also want our staff that's here to be getting the things that they want in their classroom, right? So.
Yes, so, but maybe also it makes sense to look at like FY seventeen, eighteen or something, you know?
That's good. It might be a crazy year too.
That's why I said I wasn't.
Well, I, I think it was important to get, as a first agenda item, is the appetite of the committee, based on what we have with the budget. Now we can dig down specifically to see if there's some money we can call out, and then also, you know, to just determine what the soft fees would really impact.
And I'm not saying we have to use soft fees.
No, but that, that, this is the time.
Yeah, but I think that we need to focus on what that means, that's all.
Michael, we have to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Owen, does that include the finance report? Thank you very much, on to the school committee section for comments, excuse me, for updates from the agenda positions and other subcommittees. First, it was school facilities committee, I was asked, last night we met, and I was asked by the school facilities committee to, to present the presentation that was given to us by AI three last night, they gave a nice little preliminary presentation that would be, I think, pretty edifying for the public in terms of where we're at. It's obviously recorded. I, it's, my kno, to my knowledge, so I, I couldn't get it in a format that I couldn't access the, the YouTube video. The recording of the meeting, I had initially wanted to play it here, but in, in this short notice, I was able to get the, the text sorted out. So it, it is, the town is putting it on the, on the YouTube site that Cohasset one four three TV, so you just go to YouTube, Cohasset one four three CCTV, and you should, it should be there by tomorrow, I would imagine, but either way, we're going to post it on one four three. We're also going to start having, you know, a, a lot more public communication, we're going to let a, a an update, a written update go through various channels, email, the Mariner, one four three, Facebook. So we're going to start bringing the public into this conversation a lot more now that we have some more substantive steps here. AI three's been at the school a number of times, that's again, that's a design firm that we hired to conduct the existing condition survey at the schools, all buildings, and they met, they, they met with various school personnel today, most recently was with district leadership, including some building principals and, and Dr. Scous, Dr. Sullivan. And, and myself. And we went over some, sort of like, they were trying to get an idea of what, where, where we thought, you know, some limitations were in the current facility and what we would like to see, sort of a pie in the sky, like, what do you want to be when you grow up conversation at this point? Because obviously, you know, the public hasn't even been brought into this yet, so it's not like we're actually building a school, but it was to conceive, it was to help, to help understand what the, the building shortcomings and deficiencies may be in comparison to what the district's leadership would like to see in terms of teaching and learning capabilities. So there is a lot happening, it's starting to move fast, and that's why, you know, it's going to all go public very soon, because this has to be, obviously, community discussion, discourse, and decision ultimately, if we, if we do move in this direction. But I will say, from my personal perspective in listening to all of this, it is, it is patently clear that, that we want for adequate middle and high school in Cohasset, and, and I do hope this results in, in a new, new building project, but we'll see if that is the case. That's the update, I'm, I'm, I, I hope to get school facilities committee member, maybe the chair, Jason Earls, in here in the very near future, you know, maybe the next meeting or the week, meeting after that, to, to help give a more thorough presentation. But I'm just trying to quickly summarize it, given the late hour here, and the fact that I didn't, I wasn't prepared to, to, to play the recording, as I was asked by the committee, so I apologize to all the committee members out there watching that. I'm sorry that I failed you. That's, that's my update for the school facilities committee.
Uh, Paul, she's going to have to meet to review the mask policy, probably, right? Or is the policy in, we'll have to review it, just to make sure it's in shape for the changes we're just making. We will do that. Safe Harbor update, there's going to be a guiding good choices workshop Mondays, March seventh to the twenty-eighth, ten AM to twelve PM. And there's information and registration on the Safe Harbor website, it's, it's like a workshop for parents to guide good choices for their children. There is an open Safe Harbor Coalition meeting on March fifteenth, eleven to twelve thirty PM on Zoom. There is a ground level cafe on March eleventh for students from seven to nine PM. And then there's an event at Gates Middle School, March thirtieth, from six to eight PM. It's a live reading of the award-winning graphic novel for young teens called Hey Kido. It's a memoir of the author's childhood in Worcester, his relationship with his mother who was living with opioid addiction. While some themes are challenging, Hey Kido is a story of hope and resilience, and about how grandparents, teachers, and art can help a child make it. It's at six PM, March thirtieth.
Gates Middle School, which I think is in, Mrs. St. Onge's district of situation.
Correct.
Her, her professional district, not her home district.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flory, Mr. Dial.
We had a meeting of the budget and finance committee, we talked about the things that were just presented, and so no further update from there.
Thank you, Mr. Dial, Mr. Carey. Yes, because, Mr. Dial, I went before you, and the committees that you were on, right?
Yeah, that's fine, we still, we took the win right now.
Mr. St. Onge.
I don't think I have anything of substance to.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. St. Onge, you always have something of substance to contribute, but in this particular category, I guess not. So, moving on to the next section of the agenda, it's the approval minutes, we do have two sets of minutes to approve, one from the October seventh, two thousand twenty meeting.
Yes, lost in my move, I greatly apologize, that was an oversight when I changed addresses.
No problem at all.
There is now.
And the December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, so we need to look at the two thousand twenty meeting first, and Mr. Dial, you're going to have to abstain.
With gusto.
So. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the meeting minutes as presented and submitted by our secretary, Mrs. St. Onge, for the October seventh, two thousand twenty school planning meeting?
So moved.
Motion been made by Mrs. Flory is her second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carey, y'all in favor, I.
I.
All opposed. Abstentions?
One.
Mr. Dial, thank you, that motion clearly passes by a vote of four in favor and one abstention. Next are the agenda meeting, excuse me, agenda, before I talk about, the meeting minutes from our December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. And all current committee members that are present may vote, all over present at that meeting. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the minutes as submitted by our secretary, Mrs. St. Onge? Some of those motions have been made by Mrs. Flory is her second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dial, all in favor, I. All opposed. Motion clearly passes unanimously, and those agenda, those meetings are approved. Moving on, there are no topics that I know of that are up recently, it's been within three to eight hours, there's no reason that I know of to move into executive session, which brings us to the conclusion of the meeting, is there a motion to adjourn? It's okay, guys. Motion been made by Mr. Carey is her second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dial, thank you all in favor. All opposed. Motion passes, the meeting is adjourned, thank you all so much, have a nice night.
Say we're going to get you to make that adjournment motion.